I move to approve the agenda for in-person and virtual regular meeting, City Council. Today, Monday, December 18th.
No, it's for December 4th, I'm sorry.
I support with amendments.
So, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the in-person and virtual, I'm sorry, this is for the approval of the agenda. We have a second from Councilman Ashafi with amendments. Mr. Ashafi, what would those proposed amendments be?
I would like to place item 11. I would like to have item 11 removed from the agenda and brought back at a later date.
So you are suggesting that we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, and you are suggesting that your support comes with the contingency of removing item 11, that is, the resolution to approve the new city handbook?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Do we have discussion? Thank you, ma'am.
There are a lot of items in this, in this particular handbook that are of troubling concerns to me. I myself have concerns. Council Pro-Tip has concerns, and as well as Ms. Martin of District 2, she has concerns about the nepotism. I have concerns about the, the, the removal of the pension safeguards for the pensioners, and I have concerns also about this, this, this handbook being self-evolving. And by that, I mean that once it's approved, you don't have to come back to this council again for any future changes. I got a problem with that.
Okay.
So I have quite a bit of problems with this handbook, but those are just a few today.
Thank you very much. So this is the same handbook we've been, that's been on our agenda since October?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we want to pull it again from the, from the agenda?
Uh huh, yes, sir.
So, I was asking why. So kidding, Ms. Martin, you mentioned Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin, can you tell me why?
I've got concerns and questions about the nepotism part.
What, what, what's the concern?
About the, having a relation over a boss and then being over or under a person's a family man?
We, I thought we discussed that.
No, we did not.
We discussed it at some length, actually.
No, we did not.
John Clark stood at that podium. He explained the parameters of nepotism as it related to the law. You can go back and watch the video yourself. He explained the parameters as it related to nepotism and the law. He also pointed out that they were not conflicts of interest as it related to the way that the handbook was written for nepotism. Specifically, if a husband and a wife were both firefighters, our handbook would exclude them from working together. Or if a husband and a wife, or a father or son, were both police officers, there's, the suggestion is that we should exclude them from working together. Where for a century, the cottage industry in America, that you did the same work that your parents did. So John explained that too, was standing right there at that podium in great length.
And so as long as you're not the direct boss, and so I don't think we have that. And then the second person that I think you, Mr. Ashafi, mentioned was Councilwoman Robinson. What, what is your reason, or what is your why? Because I, they've told us that they're revising the 2004 version of the handbook. I have one that was revised on, uh, Mayor Wyndham, from 2014. These ones that were revised in 2004 or 2010?
I thought they rewrote the entire document from scratch. The internet didn't exist in that document. Social media didn't exist in that document. They created this document organically for 2023 standards. So all of those, once we rescinded that, all of those handbooks went out. The EM order is gone. We are a city without an employee handbook.
So if, excuse me. To my knowledge, for all the employers that I've ever had, when they needed to change the employee handbook, that's possible. There's never a point that you cannot rewrite or go back and revisit the employee handbook, because as we know, times are changing. So of course, it's going to come back to us again, specifically for the fact that there's things like AI coming up, and there's other stuff. So to keep and keep holding this employee handbook is not benefiting your constituents or the people out there that you're trying to look out for. It's not doing any good to just hold this and not have it.
We still haven't approved the agenda.
They need an employee handbook, especially if you want to hire somebody else. We, are we going to give them an employee handbook if we hire somebody new and we don't have one? So I wouldn't want to come here without an employee handbook. So, some of those things, I think we discussed. They can always come back to the table. I don't see removing it from the agenda. Now, if when we get to it, you want to still vote, no, that's your choice. But to remove it, we are wasting time.
Thank you very much. And since COVID, every major corporation, you can go to Bloomberg, Wall Street Journal, New York Times, you can go to any major newspaper, and they will, you can find stories where corporations in the United States of America have had to alter their employee handbook as a result of the pandemic. There's certain standards that had to be improved. We're talking about something that happened between 2020 and 2022. Most major corporations in the United States of America had to alter their employee handbook in some way to accommodate those things that happened during the pandemic. And for us, a small three-square-mile municipality, a neighborhood in the city of Detroit with about 8,000 residents, for us to be deliberating over this since October is an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment. It's borders-on-buffoonish that we're having this. We had some of the best lawyers in the state to handle municipal law, covered this issue for us on at least four occasions. We got this document at the end of October, at the end of October. So we've had almost four months to read this document. It's ridiculous that we're having this conversation. Mr. Ashafi?
Council President, I am simply stating that there are issues in this handbook. And not only did I mention the fact that the, um, safeguards for the pensioners had been removed from this handbook, I also spoke on nepotism. I also spoke on the fact that you have listed elected officials in this handbook as city employees. We are not city employees. We are governed by state and federal law.
This is a municipal nonprofit. Anybody on the payroll is considered an employee.
Sure. I'm simply stating that you have made statements in this handbook.
I didn't make any statements. You keep saying it.
I'm not saying you per se, sir. Not saying you per se. I'm saying there are statements in this handbook that need to be discussed, that need to be worked out before this handbook is approved. One of the most egregious parts of this handbook is the fact that the mayor would have the right to alter this handbook anytime she sees fit, without coming back to this council. You want us to approve this handbook. We need some safeguards to make sure that we are not open to lawsuits, and we are not open to problems later on down the line in the future for mishandling. This is the same problem we had with the previous administration, who liked to do what he wanted to do when he wanted to do it, and we saw the end results of that from lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit. We cannot have this. So this handbook, all I'm simply saying is, is we need to have a moment to sit down and go page by page, and go over this handbook and make sure that it is in a manner in which does not open the city up to lawsuits, and that the pensioners are protected. And on top of that, you are attempting in this handbook to also remove councils' health insurance as well.
Okay, so thank you very much. So to keep, to keep this thing moving along, for the people in the audience, for the Detroit Documenters, for News 4, News 7, Channel 2, Fox 2, that are watching, we were supposed to be approving the agenda. We are almost 15 minutes, and this is what you've seen all year long. That, that video documentation that you see, we are supposed to be approving the agenda. We are not supposed to be deliberating these items. Everybody has a copy in front of you. This is what we've been dealing with for 12 months. The, this is item 3 on the, on your, you see that agenda in front of you? We're supposed to be approving the agenda. We could discuss this item during the deliberation as it relates to item 11. But we have not been able to approve the agenda. This is, this is a, a scenario that takes place week after week after week to ensure that this city doesn't move forward. We were supposed to be approving the agenda.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
To approve with amendments the removal of item 11. You may call the roll.
So, Ms. Manica, are you, are you, are you going to keep your support for this? Because this is, again, this is the,
It's not her support.
No, no, I'm just saying. So you made the initial motion. Mr. Ashafi is making your motion contingent upon the removal of item 11. So, are you retracting your motion for approval?
If it's going to require removing it, yes.
It will. So you must say the following words. I retract my motion for approval.
I retract my motion for approval.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item 11.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to approve the agenda with the removal of item 11 under illegal. That's the resolution to approve the new city handbook. Do we have support?
I support.
We have support from Council Pro-Tim.
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica? Council Pro-Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
No. Motion carries. Item 11 is removed from the agenda again since October. Let us proceed. So if you would strike from the record, item 11, that makes item 12 become, under Public Works, becomes item 11. And item 13, underwater, becomes item 12. Next item, the approval of proposed minutes. City Council, what's your pleasure?
You have to state what it's for, in person.
I'm sorry. This is the approval of the proposed minutes, in-person and virtual regular meeting for December 4th, 2023. City Council, what is your pleasure on item 4?
I move to approve the minutes, proposed minutes, in-person and virtual meeting, December 4th, 2023.
Support.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the in-person and virtual regular meeting, minute from December 4th, 2023. Support from Councilwoman Martin. Madam Perk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin? Yes. Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro-Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. So this is the portion of our regular meeting that we turn over a section of time to our mayor, who would like to address the citizens and city council. As this is our last meeting of the year, um, the mayor's going to need a little bit of extra time. She's got some good stuff. She got her Santa hat on. She got some goodies for folks. So, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Glenda McDonald.
Thank you. I'm going to stand over here. I'd like to turn my back to you all. So, first, I have two sections. One is to thank and to just to show my appreciation of all of you who have volunteered this year to help at RAC Center, to work with the parks, to have done anything that was done through the Parks and Recreation. So I would like to acknowledge some people. We have some people who adopted the parks, uh, this year. And so I want to start with, and I don't know if anybody's here for them, but the North End Unity Coalition. Are they here? No. Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Anyone here from there? You come on up. This, this is, no, come on up. Ms. O'Rourke is the athlete. Coach Marco speaks.
Move that chair a little bit.
You can have faith, though. We know it's not. Commissioner Martha G. Sacks. Devin Larkin. Bay of Five Bayes Sorority Incorporated. Feed Miller. Anita George. Mayor. If you receive your award, please don't leave. Renee Ford.
I need to have space.
Pastor Mrs. Hurley. Candice Benz. Cheese, she'll forward, please. Thank you. Camille Mia Bean. Well, little Mia.
You tried. You tried. All right.
Say Detroit. Terry Wheeler.
There we go.
You want to hear from the Jets? Impact Highland Park. Hi, Garden.
Come on, guys.
Danny, you've been jumping.
Look at me. Here, I do your name.
Y'all been landing?
I get to take my picture. Ready, guys? Cheese.
See your nail ball. Corporation for Artistic Development.
Hello there.
Lady See Aliteracy. Reggie McKenzie Foundation. Bay Detroit Clinic. Detroit Volleyball Club.
You're not here.
The Village.
That would be everybody, really. I like your hat, too.
Carol Duhem. And that's the Holmes. Debbie Barnett. Alexis Ramsey.
What? Oh, because I looked at you. See what was going on?
To girls and women?
Yay! Ready to go? I happen to know her.
And I think that's all.
Could you come back and take a picture, please?
So, and the other thing, I only want to think about, and then I'm going to let you guys have a think. I just want to make sure that everybody knows how appreciative I am of you all, and how much that, regardless of what didn't happen this year, that we still move forward with what did happen. And that we're going to continue to do that, no matter how much things go in a different direction. We're going to continue to focus on Highland Park. We're going to continue to focus on getting things done.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the last meeting of the year, and I'm going to be strict when it comes to this clock. Well, we have a citizen's participation. Citizens may speak for no more than two minutes on any item that appears on the agenda. So let me go over that agenda with you. We have a public hearing where city council will hear comments only. There will be no dialogue from city council members. There will be no exchange unless the Water Department will, has something for you at the end of the hearing about what notes they've taken and they've compiled. We have item 6 from the administration. It's a resolution to appoint Bernie Gale Logan to the Recreation Commission. We have item 7 under city administration, a resolution authorizing interest rate modification for Highland Park. Number 8 is the approval of our schedule for 2024. Number 9 is under community development. There are a couple of things, a resolution for variances that have already been approved by Planning Commission. We receive our financial monthly statement at the Public Works. Their resolution to approve the heavy truck is back. And underwater, this is a resolution to conditionally approve the interim amended fiscal year 2024 Water Department budget and rates. So those are the items that we can discuss now, only agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would make your way to the podium, and I will set my clock. And I assure you, I intend to be very strict with this time today. Just a second. I got to get my doohickey together. We don't have a big fancy wall clock like they have down at Tacoma Young Building yet, but, um, there's going to be a sale on Amazon, so you never know. Okay, Ms. Ford?
Good evening. My name is Renee Ford. I live on Buna Vista. My concern is Public Works. I stated this before, and I'm going back on the record, and I'm going to state it again. No, you can't answer. We have the money to get these trucks repaired. I noticed tonight it's only one truck on here. So as you know, it was snowing today, and it was a little rain, so that caused a little ice on the road. So again, I need council to approve getting this one truck approved, if you don't do nothing else, because you're always complaining, or not everyone is complaining about lawsuits. And I guarantee you, everybody or somebody is looking to Sioux Highland Park. So it was stated before, we had the money. So guess what? We need to use that money to get at least, again, one truck fixed. I don't care which truck it is, but when it comes to salt in these streets, or whatever that truck is needed for, evidently needed, because it keeps coming back to the agenda. So I need council to approve getting this truck fixed.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else with agenda items? Ma'am, I'm going to hold you to two minutes. Go right for it.
So I also want to, to speak to the truck. First of all, before I say everything else I'm going to say about that, I think the council should approve the truck. I don't think that it is a fair price for the truck. I don't think the Department of Public Works did their due diligence, even though I've heard that there, that there was diligence done, and yet they presented the exact same piece of paper that they had on November 6th, minus any, you know, additional, um, quotes for, for that work. But I agree that we should do it. I just think that we should make a note that in the future, we need to do better with our city budget, and we have to do better with accounting in general. I have a few things to say about that at the public hearing as well, but I'll just leave my comments there for now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Garrett, hi, City Council. I wanted to know, how did you come up with water rates due to the fact that the meters haven't been installed yet? Okay, he said ask questions right now due to this thing right here. And, um, Miss Square, I wanted to know, how would we have lost our house by December? Because you said that many times.
You had a tax levy. You're going to lose the house, but the tax levy is going to run taxes. That bill, you would have got that bill in December. If you can't pay it, though. So you would have gotten your regular taxes and then an additional levy. And that levy would have been spread out for, the past judge, Judge Johnson said he wasn't gonna put the whole 25 million on at once. He was going to spread it out. So that would have started. So there's people in the city who can't afford it. We have only a 66% of tax collection now. We don't have 100% tax collection. So we have lots and lots of foreclosures every year without a levy. So when I said that that tax levy was coming on, it was coming on. And then there was the threat of the additional lawsuit. Everybody heard how they claimed we owe 54 million. So there was the 25 million and then the additional. We, this, we settled that. So that's some of the stuff that we gave up. So for this, this temporary rate increase, you're getting $70 million in funding to improve your system. No tax levies. You get to keep your houses, you get all the cases settled. You get the water meters, uh, studies done, make sure that they go in the right places. And so that's for this temporary rate increase, that's what we got. So, you know, we're, we're here tonight because we're having the public hearing on the rate increase. And so we'll get into that. And some things have happened since we met last. We talked about that, we told you to try to get it down, that's why we put this three upstairs, try to get it down lowest. Tonight we're doing a conditional approval, we got another month, maybe get them down a little more. But we, this is a temporary increase, uh, for the next six months because we settled. So we, you know, we gave up, but we also got a lot. Well, that's what I meant.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Square. I don't see anybody else at the podium, so I'm gonna assume we don't have anymore. Um, Bishop, you coming to talk? Oh, he's coming for an agenda. Okay, so seeing no more citizens coming to the podium, we're gonna move into the public hearing. Let me set a framework for this public hearing. You will not hear a peep out of City Council during this public hearing. This is a public hearing, there will be no comments entertained by the chair from my peers. The normal citizens' participation is two minutes, I'm gonna extend that out to three because this is a contentious issue. People probably have a lot to say. The room is full. That three minutes should allow individuals who have something to say as it relates to the water rate hikes. Um, Mr. Garrett, have you provided, your team had provided information for the citizens out there? Is there anything out there for them?
There, there are two handouts out there.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. So you have the handouts that you would need, hopefully you've had an opportunity to peruse those handouts. But we will. Are you coming up to the podium for the water? So, uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, it is 7:35. We will call the public hearing open. Citizens who would like to come up to the podium to address the, the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 Water Department budget. Yes, ma'am. Yes, please, if you would.
So we didn't talk about where we landed. So before you have come up and, you know, that's why I put the conditional approval on the agenda, because I didn't want you all to come up with the torches. I wanted you to know that this was a conditional approval that's reliant on all the other deals and all the other money and, and the contracts and the new ACO with the state. All of these deals, all converging at once, so we don't just hike the rates and then the rest of it doesn't happen. So that's why we've got the conditional approval. What we told you last month was that we were gonna work on some things and we had. One of the things, it's the next item on the agenda, is, um, we had the, we asked the State of Michigan to, we asked, asked them to forgive some of the debts that we already have, you know, delay and defer some of the, the rates that we're paying on bonds and loans because we felt that we could bring the budget down. We didn't have to pay though. So what happened was they went one step further and eliminated all interest on existing loans for the life of the law. So that brought the budget down a lot. And, uh, and then the governor stepped in, she heard the cries and she put four and a half million dollars in THO because there will be people that, you know, are challenged that won't be able to pay the increase. So now we have a number of assistance plans from THO to Wayne Metro to, uh, BHHS. And, uh, and then once we get the GLEWA contract signed, we'll also be able to qualify for their RAP program. So that happened, so that, so we put the budget out with three, four, count four story worst case scenario. With the high, the medium and the low. So the good news is, we got it to the low. We got it to the lowest increase possible. So tonight we come in with this, uh, contingency request for approval because this is the other problem. We signed the term sheet and the term sheet said that we would do this by the end of December. So this is our good faith effort to, to prove this, we're gonna do this contingency approval hopefully tonight. And so we've done our part, so they can't come back and say, you reneged on the deal. You haven't held up your end of the bargain. And so this is where we are tonight. So we are, Damon has done, got the chart and information. This rate increase is a temporary increase. It's a six-month increase. So, uh, and, and we've learned so much. We've learned so much over the past nine years about the system, about how they're billing, about all of the things, all of various components. Uh, someone had mentioned, someone had said something, well, Ms. Square, why don't you talk about the tower? Reason why we want the water tower is because it's about a million dollars cheaper if a community has their own tower. Because they pump the water at night, stores are paid for the water. Right now, we pay for peak water. So we're, we're pumping water all day long during peak, it's coming up the hill from the river and it's super, super expensive. And so that, that's why our system was designed with the tower. And so, but we don't, at this point, I'm gonna be honest, we're not gonna make the same mistake as Flint. Because Flint started making decisions on their own. We're not doing it. Part of our, the term sheet requires that we hire professional licensed bonded insured consulting engineers to make recommendations to the city. That way, we're not doing something based on how we feel and all of that. Because we're not going there, we've learned a lesson from what happened up there. Now, it may come back, we don't know what is gonna come back. We don't know whether or not it's gonna, we're gonna be able to either another location or go back to the way it used to be or, or what, we don't know. But we will find out from empirical engineering studies. Folks, we got some insurance before we do anything in this city jeopardize the health, wealth and safety of people in this city. We've learned, so we're just going to, uh, move forward with the experts. And so Damon, so that's kind of what's going on. Um, Damon, I'll let you say.
Hold on, one thing before we get started here, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Uh, that's, I need some action from City Council, I need a motion on the floor to open the public hearing.
Want to make a motion to open up the public hearing?
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to open the public hearing with support from Councilwoman Manica. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Thank you very much. As of 7:39, the actual public hearing is in full session. Mr. Garrett, we'll turn it over to you if you have any opening statements. And then citizens, if you have comments, please, the same rules apply. We're gonna extend it out to three minutes tonight. We need your input, this is not for City Council, this is a public hearing for the public. Mr. Garrett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening, council, good evening, residents. So thank you Kathy for the, all, doing all of my job. But, but, um, I, I do kinda wanna just, what's that? Oh, okay, you want me to do it like that? Okay, all right. So, good evening, everyone. So what I wanna do is I kinda wanna, Kathy talked, touched briefly on this, but I wanna talk about this chart because, uh, you need to understand what that chart represents. And when kinda all this started, the settlement came together in October. Um, everybody wanted to pull everything together at once. And what you see right here is, this is what the average water bill is today, based on the rates that we have today, okay? About 60 bucks, okay? So this is very important because in October, we were gonna go from here to here. So that's 164% increase. Now, you know, there were some things out there, people were talking about 400% and things like that. So there are several things that go into the rate, but the overall bill that we were talking about increasing was 164%. So that is tremendous, right? Going from $60 to $162. So what, why, why was that happening? Okay, so for many, since we've been here since 15, we, we've been in dire straits when it comes to the water budget and what's going on in water finance portion, okay? So every year, the Water Enterprise Fund has been borrowing from the General Fund, okay? So that's not good, that's not how you want your water, your Water Department Enterprise Fund needs to stand on his own and not borrow from the General Fund. The General Fund has obligations and things that they need to do and does not need the Water Department borrowing from that, okay? So one of the terms was, is the Water Department, the rates have to reflect the Water Department standing on its own. The Water Department can no longer borrow from the General Fund, okay? Uh, 2022 and 2023, talking about three and four million dollars, okay? That's huge, okay, huge. So that was one of the things that they wanted, was no more borrowing from the General Fund, okay? The other thing that they wanted is, you need to put these new rates in place and make up for all of the shortfall in the budget right now, which is not fair. Because when we were talking about this in October, we're already three months into the fiscal year. So what they were saying was make up for the shortfall with the new rates right now. So again, that's reflected in this, as well as absorbing 100% of the GLEWA bill. So, uh, the old contracts that are no longer void, are no longer valid, had us paying about 65 cents on the dollar roughly, okay? 65% of what GLEWA was billing us, okay? This right here reflects 100%. So that's no longer the 65%, but we'd be obligated to pay the full 100. So obviously, going from $60 to $160 and 164, that, that's not, that's not good, right? We, we weren't gonna stand for that, so we were gonna fight that. So what we've been doing for the last two months is we've been working diligently on several things, several scenarios, to get us down to where we are. So Kathy said, you know, we're about as low as we can go right now. So it doesn't look pretty, you said 0% to 60%, right? Not, that's not exciting, but it's not 164%. And part of the deal was, we were gonna have to give up something to get something. So, we don't, we don't wanna operate in the red in, in, in the water fund, but we also understand that we can't have the ra, rates skyrocket. So part of these negotiation part, and, and the lady that came up, she asked about rates and meters. Well, we're unmetered, we've been unmetered since 2012, since the water plant shut down, okay? We're on emergency water and we've been on emergency water for 11 years now. It's unmetered emergency water, okay? So that's kind of what it is, it's an estimate, okay? So what, what, what needs to happen is, is we need to get these meters, these water meters in the ground so that we can accurately measure the water that we are using. Right now, it's an estimate. But part of this settlement is the $25 million that the state says, okay, you need to raise your rates, but we're gonna give you something. We're gonna give you 25 million to get these meters in the ground, that's water and sewer. Sewer's bigger problem than water, sewer is almost, it's close to $6 million bill, water is a million. So none of it's measured right now. So the good news in, in, in settling this, is no more estimates, we need measured things. We can't afford to have somebody projecting what we're using and then us having to pass that on to the residents and the business owners. So we're, we're, we're moving away from that. But part of the thing that we need to do is we need to have some new rates that kinda do some of these things. And they're, and, and it's gonna be a temporary situation. Meters are supposed to go in the ground by the end of next year, 1231, 2024, the water meters have to go in the ground. So really, that's when the, that's when the good news really starts, right? We're still in the pain threshold, we're still, we're still paying. And, and it's not, this is, this is not for today necessarily. You gotta understand that this situation, we, it took us a long time to get here. Our water main is 100 years old. And before we got here in 14, not a lot of maintenance was done with that. So if you got a car, you don't, you don't change the spark plugs, you don't do anything with the oil, you don't rotate the tires, you're gonna have a mess on your hands. We're in the middle of mess. Now, the good news is, we're on, we're getting ready, i- if we can get through this, to be on the upswing, okay? So that is, we, they got, we have 20 million, 25 million for meters, water and sewer, good measure. That means the bill's gonna go down, okay? Part of the settlement was, is for us to go out in the field and measure, we, we, all these water main breaks, we got here, we having a water main break two and three a week, okay? We, we don't really do, that's not really the case anymore. But when the water main breaks, water leaks, right? And we have to pay for that. So part of this settlement was to validate, we were saying we've been overcharged, so you gotta go out and validate these breaks. So, so we did that about a month ago. We're gonna see a 25% reduction in the bill. So we went out with GLEWA, we walked all the water main locations that were repaired in the last year. They signed off on it and that's gonna reduce our bill, our, what they're sending to us. So it's about two MGD, that's gonna go down to 1.78, okay, 25% reduction. What does that mean? That means less, less charge for the, for the water, okay? So what we're doing is now we're moving away from the estimate and we're moving towards accuracy. So that's the water side. The sewer side is, is a much bigger problem, people don't talk about, you talk about water, water, water. But we got a combined sewer system. It's a lot, when it rains, you know about the stormwater charge, everybody knows about that, they don't like that. That's because we don't have a separated system. So when it rains, it combines with our sewage and we get a nice, large bill, okay? That's not metered either. So when it rains, how much does it rain? How much water is actually in the sewer that we are getting charged for? That is a huge problem. $5.8 million is the bill right now annually from GLEWA for sewer. So it's a part of the settlement was to get sewer meters in the ground. So water meters by 1231, sewer meters in the ground, starting in the spring for 12 months. So what's gonna happen is now we're gonna have real accurate data, right? To compare against what we've been getting to what's actually being measured now. So that's, that's a huge part of this, this discussion. So when we get that, now we have some real empirical data and now we can say, this is what our bills should be based on. So when Kathy talks about temporary, yeah, we have to raise the rates, these may go down. I expect them to go down a little bit more, once we get real measured information. Sewer maybe come down a million or so, water come down to $300,000, okay? And, and then she talked about tower, which is a little bit further down the road, but that is so that we can draw water at nighttime off peak, right? It's cheap off peak, we draw it at 6:00 in the morning, everybody's taking a shower, costs a lot of money. You wanna draw it at night, like between 7:00 and 3:00 in the morning. Then in the morning, when you need to take a shower, or whatever you're doing, you wanna empty the water tower and you don't have to pay that premium rate, but that's down the road. So this thing is, first thing we gotta do is get through this settlement and, and, and painfully make it through this hearing and, 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 and understand what this rate increase is about and get past that. That will allow us access to the 25 million to get the meters in the ground. There's also 70 million on the table to fix the rest of the water, the rest of the water system. So we've got 14, about 25% of it that's been fixed since 2017. We got 45 miles to go. Wow, they put the $70 million out there for us to go ahead and do that on a grant, not on a loan. So when we came here, first couple of times we did rate increase, the rate increases, we had to increase the rates because we had to pay those costs back over 30 years. This is the state saying, hey, here's the money for you to take care of your system. So we won't get in this situation that we're in if we would have been so actively repairing your water main, should be doing for a system this size about a mile a year. So if we were replacing a mile a year, your rating, your rate hike would be a, a fingernail, okay? Because you're actively replacing the water main. So over a course of time, you would replace the entire system and you wouldn't have to go and replace it all at once and pay for it all at once. That is the bulk of our problem and what we have to get through. But I can tell you, since we've been here, we've been replacing water main every year, like you're supposed to. We've been fixing leaks like you're supposed to, we've been exercising valves and hydrants like you're supposed to, but we're just a little bit, we're a little bit behind the curve. So tonight, this is where we are. We, 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 we got, we, uh, we got rid of the shortfall, so we're not, we're not paying the General Fund back today. So we're not, we're not paying the General Fund back today. Now, we can't raise the rates and do all that. So, you know, we move into this condition. Uh, we, we, we looked at taking some legal fees out of the budget. Uh, we, we looked at reallocating our expenses on our charges in the budget. And, and even, you know, we, we talked about and are prepared to reducing our fees by at least fifteen percent. So we, we've been doing all of that over the last three months to get to this. Now, some of the things we're waiting on, we're waiting on the state to produce some of this legal information that, that has all been agreed upon. We start, some of it started trickle in. Um, Kathy talked about, we got, we got an interest deferral. We said, hey, look, we got old loans we're paying on, three hundred thousand a year for that, right? Can we, can we maybe postpone indefinitely, you know, principal interest? That would help us. That would save us three hundred thousand dollars a year. So there's going to be, they're going to talk about that later. So that's reflected in this. So we, we've been doing all of those things to get us to something that doesn't look great, but given the circumstances in the past ten years, it's not a bad situation to be in. So that's, that's kind of where we are today. I mean, you know, if you go to war a, a, and it's over, you got to give up something to get something. We can't, we can't go back in time and give up nothing to get everything. We, we can't do that. Unfortunately, we have to go through this so we can be much more responsible and get back on our feet. The other, the other thing, and Councilman Shabi's talked about this, is we got under ten thousand residents, right? And, and, and those people have been paying the bills. But the problem is, is we need more residents. We need more businesses to defer those costs out. We, right now, certain group of people are bearing that brunt. Well, until we get the development game going, we, we can't, we can't really level that out. And that's another part of our problem. We don't, I, you know, we talk about community development. That's very, very vital to this city, is getting community development here, getting tax base here to defer these costs. Otherwise, as these rates go up, they're saying people keep getting hit in the head. And, and Shabi has been very clear and other people about that. I can't do anything about that. I can't bring development here. But when we get it here, it'll be better, it'll be much, much better for us. So that's, that's my brief.
And I just want to add one. Forty-six percent of the bill to be my president.
That's right.
And other payments paid by businesses. So if you own business, you know, you've got, you're going to get a significant increase. Now, businesses, of course, can write it off. They got to pay it first, but they can write it off. Uh, but, um, the other thing that I want to say is, this is really an attempt to save the city. And I think that's why the state said, you know, here's the money. We're going to appropriate it so that you can fix everything because the city has shrunk down to what it was happening. And the old Highland Park, you all remember it? People who are from here remember the wonderful, glorious old Highland Park. Fifty-eight thousand people. You got eight thousand now. And I think this was an attempt to try to kickstart redevelopment. Because now when developers come, the city will have some skin in the game because the city will have the money for the water and sewer lines. The new lines, which any development will need because you can't develop on some old rotten land. So this is very, this is a tough, you know, it's a while. And let me just say this, it's a, it's a tough road ahead. It's a tough road ahead because now, once everything is signed, it's got to be executed and followed up on and done. And so, you know, I'll probably be struck by like, because nobody goes on hunch, no mess. And so, but all of you that are here tonight, stay here because this is going to be a, a, a long road. Talking about replacing seventy-five percent of the water and sewer lines in the city and, and getting it metered and all of that. That's going to, that's going to be a tough job. Hopefully, we can do it because, you know, what's the alternative? The alternative is we got a neighbor that can provide every service that we provide in the city. And so we just got to be diligent to try to get this done so the city can survive. So anyway.
One more thing. I forgot to say that, um, we, the state, we, we haven't seen the documents yet, but there were several things that they committed to. They put the money on the table. But the one thing that we were adamant about was that rate shock, right? Because the people who've been paying the bills have been very good and paying the bills. So, you know, we, we said, hey, we need, we're going to need some real cash to offset sixty dollars to ninety dollars. The people don't have thirty extra dollars. I mean, some people don't seem like a lot, but I know Highland Park's a lot of money. So, you know, while we say conditional, we haven't got everything we need. So we said, we're going to do our part and honor the term sheet, which is coming here and have this hearing because if we don't do our part, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to move forward. But we still need that real commitment. Like, we got MFA here. That was something that was being talked about. Well, they're here. We got that commitment. Still need to know where this four and five million is going to be coming from annually. How long is that going to last? Because that's going to be very important to the people who are going to be here trying to pay these bills, okay? So I, I didn't want to not mention that. That's very important, but we haven't seen, there was a press release on it, okay? But we need, we need paper. We need things to say, hey, this is really what we're going to do. We need real commitments. We haven't got those. I have faith in the state, however, we, we, we haven't seen that. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we are. I know, uh, this month, I think, uh, I think Wayne Metro got like a hundred thousand dollars. And people have been, more people have been taking advantage of this money. There's been a lot of money out here, but the problem was, was the stipulations were too high. Well, now, we've been screaming about that. They're dropping those stipulations, which means more people qualify to go get this money. So that's out there, but I, I don't, I don't have that to reduce to you. But we're holding the state accountable, saying, hey, look, we're going to do our part. But I'll tell you what, where we were is that absolutely we're going to vote this down. Then that was just not too long ago. And, and there's no way, we, you know, we can't even talk about that. So now we, we can kind of talk about this a little bit, but we still need everything that we need. There's legal documents that they owe legal, they owe, you know, we need proof of, of the support and all of that, which I think they're going to do. They wouldn't be out saying these press, putting stuff in the press and saying these things if they weren't going to do it. So I didn't want to let you guys talk before I mention that piece. And I'll, I'll stop and I'll let you guys, and, and all the way, you know, I, I look at it like this, we knew this was going to be tough. I, I have been not looking forward, I've been looking forward to this meeting, but not looking forward to it. Be real with you, right? Thinking, dreaming about this, waking up like, ah, you know, because, because I know people are going to, are angry, right?
Hold on a second, Ms. Frye. When, when, once Mr. Garrett comes down and I'll let you.
Yeah, I'll come up there. So I, I, I just wanted to say that, that this, this is, uh, this is probably the single most important meeting that I've been in since two, twenty fourteen. I've been here since fourteen. I've been in, in the city nine years. We've done a lot of stuff. But this, this is, you know, we talked about the plan a lot. So this, this right here is kind of putting us on that trajectory where we can start going in the direction we need to go. We weren't going in that direction for the last eight, nine years. So we're going to have to have the difficult conversation to get through it, but this is where we are. So I, I'll let, I'll let the public go. I'm going to go over here, take notes, and then we'll, we'll deal with, uh, with, with those on the back end.
Thank you very much. And I want to reiterate to the audience, this is a public comment opportunity. You will have three minutes to make your comment. This is not question and answer. They're recording this data. The meeting is being recorded. They're taking notes. They're making audio recordings. This is the public comment section. You will have three minutes instead of the standard two, because obviously this is a sensitive issue. But we want to make sure that if everyone in the room wanted to speak, that they could. So that is the, uh, set of rules that we will go for. Uh, also, because this is a public hearing, everyone's first and last name needs to be recorded in the record. They need to be able to associate the comment with the individual. So if there are citizens in the audience that would like to make comments on this water issue, if you will be kind enough to start to queue up at the podium, we would greatly appreciate you. Go ahead, ma'am. I won't start, uh, counting until you get going.
Lucy Frye. Mr. Damon, you never did an, answer the question I asked. And reading that contract, you seen that it was, um, you and GLEWA that made the contract. Um, and I'm trying to understand, why wasn't the water plant even included in the contract of being repaired, uh, some sort like that? Because we do have a major, uh, 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 thing here. Water is liquid gold in this country right now. People are really fighting for water. And we have a big, um, opportunity here. And I'm just wondering, why wasn't that even mentioned?
Ms. Square, can I get you for just a second?
It feels, you know, like we're just being kind of pushed and forced here. Like, you know, save us, save us. We see all this, like, you know, we can go to this free thing, that free thing, everything. This is not clotting area right now. We're not in clotting time. We can survive ourselves, you know? So I'm just wondering, why are we not talking about the fixing the plant? Because we can be a resource for other communities, which we have been in the past. And like I said, where those numbers come from? Thirty, forty, sixty dollars? Why not one dollar, fifty cents, you know, those type of increase? And it looks like we're paying the bill still. Somehow, we're still paying the bill here. It's quiet.
My name is Ms. Stafford, and I live in Highland Park for years and years and started my family. The only thing I don't like about our city, county as a whole, you're not listening to a lot of the people. We, when it first happened to us, and I went down there and looked at that, in that hole, that, that thing, we needed a new one. The problem with me is I don't understand why we were stuck with all of these companies that was in here. A lot of them has left. Don't you know the law in order to go catch them to get that money they owe? You all put all of this on the residents. And it's not right. Most of the resident at the time was working. They leave the kids in school. We don't have time to be home all day running water. And we learned that all of that water came from these companies. We need peoples to fight for us to get these companies and make rules for them. I'm tired of rules on us. And now it done got so bad. Most of us are seniors. We still don't use that much water. And you don't even say anything in your plans about the companies, the ones that left and the ones that are here. Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to talk specifically on the water issue?
Linda Wheeler, I got a question. Uh, this proposed ninety-eight dollars, when does this start? And how long is this rate going to, uh, have our citizens, you know, to pay this? Ninety-eight dollars? Because that's like a thirty-seven dollar increase? And I'm just wondering, how long is this proposed? Was it going to go to what, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six? I don't know. Um, we went to Lansing and, uh, we talked to legislators. We also, um, uh, spoke and we had a rally. And, you know, um, we've only eight thousand residents here, which has been brought out and which we know. We've been, we've been really burdened over a lot. Um, and here continues to be burdened. I understand what you're saying, Ms. Square, that it's a rough road, but it's been a rough road continuously for Highland Park. Um, I was just wondering, because we're less than eight thousand, are we entitled to the rule, uh, 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 grants? Because we're less than eight thousand people here in an urban area. That was talked about when John Conyers was, uh, alive, that our numbers, then we may have a rule, uh, 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 classification. Um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Garrett and Kathy Square, all of the work that you did. I know that you work real hard. This could have been worse if we didn't have your expertise, but we still need some more help. Um, the, the holiday is coming up and I'm just going to tell you, thirty-eight dollars hurts a lot of people. It really does. So I was just wondering, are there any other grants, any other, uh, uh, we can reach out to? Because as she was saying, we've got our own water tower, which means that we can eventually, you know, manufacture our own water and not even really have to pay a water bill. Um, I do appreciate all that you've done, but there's still some more that I, I just wish that maybe that can be, uh, recommended.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lisa Stilarsky. I live on Moss Street. Um, I, I do just want to reiterate something that Damon and Ms. Square said, and that is that there is four million dollars specifically earmarked for Highland Park in the thaw fund. And I, I think that bodes well for our being able to afford the increase. Um, I, I do think we need a little bit more, um, explanation about how we qualify. Um, and, um, I want to set that aside for a minute because, uh, I just wanted to, that was a comment. But, um, uh, the last time we had, um, a, a budget that went along with this, and this time we don't have that budget. I'm wondering when we're actually going to see the Water Department budget again. Um, so that, that's the second thing. Um, and, um, and the third thing is that I, I did a little research since last time I spoke with you guys. And our charter says that, um, the Water Department needs to, uh, comply with GAAP accounting. Um, it's in section fourteen point two, under rates. Second sentence, um, is transactions pertaining to the ownership and operation of each such utility shall be recorded in a separate group of accounts, which shall be classified and kept in accordance with generally accepted accounting practices. That's GAAP. Um, now, the people who, uh, make GAAP, um, for municipalities is the generally, uh, I'm, I'm, um, sorry, the Government Accounting Standards Board. Um, and so the, the rule that, um, Water Department reporting would fall under is G A S B thirty-four of nineteen ninety-nine. Um, and the statement is, um, uh, it says, "This statement establishes financial reporting standards for state and local governments, including states, cities, towns, villages, and special purpose governments, such as school districts and public, public utilities. It establishes the basic financial statements and required supplementary information for general purposes government, um, and that it should consist of, number one, management discussion and analysis." Um, that's a professional, like the person who's writing it, they need to explain it. Um, and then basic financial statements. And they speci, they specify something that sounds pretty much like the kind that you're used to. Um, the first one is assets and liabilities. The second one is revenues and expenses. And the third is gains and losses. Um, so in the budgets that I've seen, um, and any of the reporting I've seen, all of these things are conflated together and we never get assets and liabilities. Uh, it goes on further to say that they need to be separating out the, um, um, the long-term liabilities from the short-term liabilities. But, um, anyway, I, I won't go on with this, but I do want to let you guys know that I've created a dashboard for studying this. And every single Monday that we don't have a city council meeting, um, for the next six months or so, I will be studying, um, municipal accounting. Um, uh, and accounting's not rocket science.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stilarsky. We got to our three minutes, okay?
I would like to invite you all to study with me.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Please. Say your name for the record, sir.
Daniel Pacman. And, uh, I just met Lisa tonight and I think she's cool and I want to study with her, but I don't think that was a very helpful, uh, whatever she just said. That was kind of condescending. And, uh, I just wanted to say that, um, I bought a house from the land bank and, uh, I haven't taken the time to research it, but, um, the drainage fee, they, they were like, we think that's unconstitutional. And I'm not sure what they meant by that. I haven't researched it or compared it to others. That could be one thing to like change at the same time if there's some issue with that, uh, fee to, um, yeah, one, one more thing.
Thanks, ma'am.
And we should also, oh, I'll say something about three years.
I love this town. Is there anybody else? Please, sir, make yourself comfortable.
Good evening, City Council.
Please say your name for the record.
My name is Lauren McGee.
Thank you.
And, um, I'd like to say, um, I give a compliment to Damon. I like to be able to focus and see that there's an end to a problem. I like to know that there's sunshine at the end, when, when, when it's dark. We have a plan to walk into that sunshine. So I'm just glad we have a plan because that's the thing. Give us something to hang our hats. to hang our hats on, because we were all around the place. I mean, you know. But I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I like that we have a plan. And the key thing is to stick to the plan. That's the most important thing. And the other thing is, I was surprised that the Water Department didn't have a sinking fund, it sounded like, because we were borrowing money from the general fund. So get a sinking fund if you don't have one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello.
Good evening, ma'am. Would you state your name for the record?
Dana Lofton.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lofton. Go right ahead.
We talked about this. We went to, we went to City, to, to Lansing about the water. I understand y'all talking about, we hear about this twenty-year contract. When is y'all gonna put it in plan? I understand we got this. We don't hear about groundwork, infrastructure. We don't hear about any of this stuff. And I'm gonna put it like this. I have kids. My water has basically dirt and lime in it. And it runs low. You turn my water on, it smells like literally chlorine. Like I'm drinking, basically, we turn it on, it smell like I'm in a pool of water at a hotel. I just want to know what are y'all, what's gonna happen about fixing it. That's it.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Viva Carlos Thomas, resident here in Highland Park. I have two, two questions. One, we're talking about the rates. And one of the things that I, I felt was a tragedy in this city is closing down the water plant. Is there a plan for replacing, renewing, or fixing up the water plant? Can anybody answer that?
No, sir. We're not answering questions. All of this is being recorded. All of this is being collected, and they may come back to us at a later date.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so I just want to ask that question, okay?
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, sir. Would you state your name for the record?
Anthony Leek.
Thank you, sir. Go right ahead.
Good day, City Council. My question is, could the contract be, like the other residents said, could that be negotiated where there is a set aside to reinstate the water facility? Because I don't know if everybody in here knows the history of Highland Park. Highland Park has had its own water since the eighteen hundreds. Highland Park has very, very expensive land that the water pumps are on in the suburbs, in Gross Point, and other suburban areas. So they have three different pumping stations for Highland Park. So why would Highland Park be tied to a twenty-year lease on the water? So, and then there's also, there's grants available for, for water efficiency. So there's things that's called like gray water, and there's a lot of grants available, so the citizens could apply for those grants and get them, and then the water could be like your water that you wash your hands with could be used in your toilet, so that you're circulating the water. The water is going four or five times around in your house. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Oh, oh, and one more thing. Why are we still using old technology, like Little House on the Prairie technology with water towers? When we know there's hydraulic, electric, hydraulic pumps, where it can increase the water pressure and give you electricity that could power the city all at the same time? And it could save the residents on their electric, electrical bills, along with the water bills. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. I see no movement at the podium, so at this point, I'm assuming all comments have been made. The chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I want to make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica to close the public hearing for tonight's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four Water Department Budget. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica? Council Pro Tim Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries the, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Water Department Budget Hearing ended at eight sixteen P M. Mr. Garrett, hopefully you've been able to capture the information that you needed. Of course, our meetings are still, are collected and stored via Zoom. Everything that happens in this chamber is recorded. If anyone in the room wants to get access to anything that's happening, any meeting is available on the Highland Park Facebook page. Moving on to item four under the administration, this is the resolution to appoint Vernon Gale Logan to the Recreation Commission. City Council, what is your pleasure on item six?
I move to appoint Vernon Gale Logan to the Recreation Commission.
So we have a motion on the floor for the approval of the resolution to appoint Vernon Gale Logan to the Recreation Commission. Do we have a second?
I have support with questions.
Yeah, I have support from Ms. Martin, and she has questions. Ms. Martin, the floor is yours.
Is, um, is it Vernon Gale Logan here? I'll say it again. Vernon. Love your name.
Geez, is that your only question, ma'am?
No.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, please. You have another question?
Yes. Okay, so this is your, your resume, right? Yes, and you're applying for the Recreation Commission?
I've been appointed to the Recreation.
You say you've been appointed, so you've been already sitting on the?
No. For an appointment. I didn't know I had. This is what I sent in to go.
Okay, and you, you've never sat on the commission before?
No.
What's your understanding of what they do?
My understanding of what they do is to help with the up, the upkeep of the facility, the part where they need help with maybe company facility and things of that, of that matter.
Okay, and your background is in education?
It is. And I've worked there for volunteer. I'm not gonna say work. I volunteered there for years.
At the
Recreation.
Got it, okay. No further questions.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Al Shafi.
Ma'am, hold on. I had to wait until Council President to recognize me. Are you a resident here in Highland Park?
Am I a resident?
Yes.
Over fifty years, same corner, same house, Monterey and Third.
All right, all right. Okay, I'm good.
Additional questions? No, I'm sorry. That's my, my, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on item six under the administration?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica? Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, ma'am. Moving on to item seven of the city administration, this is a resolution authorizing interest rate modifications to Highland Park State Revolving Fund Program Bonds. Again, this is a resolution authorizing interest rate modifications on the Highland Park State Revolving Fund Program Bonds. City Council, what is your pleasure on this item?
Approve with questions.
I'm sorry, I need to get a formal motion. Can we get a motion?
I, I motioned to approval of the resolution authorizing the interest rates modification of Highland Park State Revolving Fund Program Bond, like you don't know that. Good God.
See, that, so, so, okay, 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 fine, that's fine, that's fine. You're not gonna go, you're not gonna go short bus today. Do we have support? Do we have support? For item seven, Mr. Al Shafi has made a motion. Do we have support? Ask Ms. Manica. Thank you very much, Ms. Manica. I have a motion on the floor for Councilman Al Shafi for the approval of the resolution. With questions, we have support from Councilwoman Manica. Mr. Al Shafi, please state your questions.
Is there somebody that can speak to this?
Good evening, everybody, again. Yes. Ron Lipscomb is here. Ron is with Miller Canfield. If, for those of you who've been here forever, remember Ron Bolger. He was the city's bond council. Miller Canfield has been bond council for the Highland, City of Highland Park forever. And so Ron is here tonight. He had to come here tonight because we got this deal done, and the state decided that they would pay him. And so that was good. And so I said, well, we can't get free service, so you still have to come to council. So he's gonna come here and explain the, what, what's happened.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, Council President, members of council. My name is Ron Lipscomb. I'm an attorney at Miller Canfield. As Kathy has noted, I have served as bond council for the city for several years, and my predecessor for many years before that. So in the spirit of the season, I come bearing glad tidings and good gifts and all that good stuff. So the state reached out to me in the past several weeks, indicated that they had been speaking with the city, and Kathy was instrumental in that to provide for some interest rate relief, some debt service relief on the outstanding city bonds that have been financed through the Michigan Finance Authority State Revolving Loan Fund Program. So basically what that is, is the state sets up this program. It's funded in part by the federal government and in part by state funds to provide low-interest financing for communities to improve their water and sewer systems. So the state, the city currently has seven outstanding series of bonds. The oldest began in nineteen ninety-nine, and then in two thousand eighteen, there was a series. In two thousand twenty, there were three series. And then in two thousand twenty-one, there were two series. Most is that, most of that is for water. Two series are for sewer improvements, but the interest rates basically run from one, one point eight seven five percent up to, I think, two point two five percent is the max rate. And what the state has agreed to do is to reduce the interest cost on the outstanding principal amounts of the bonds to zero percent for the life of the bonds. If you'll give me one moment, I can tell you the exact savings that that will be. Five million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars over many years. I mean, thirty, forty years roughly. But, you know, real money, it starts in the first year at three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in annual savings. So what you have in front of you right now is a resolution simply to modify each of the bonds so that the interest rate is reflected as zero percent effective as of October one of twenty twenty-three. So the payment that was made, you have a, you had, you paid debt service on October one. That will be the last time you'll have to pay interest on any of the bonds owned by the state. And so basically, yes.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, so good news.
I get it.
So basically, the resolution authorizes the amendment of the bonds and authorizes city officials to execute the new bonds, including the mayor and city clerk as required under the charter. And then we're gonna file some new tax documents, because these were tax exempt bonds. So we're just gonna file some updated tax forms with the IRS on your behalf as well, and we'll need the mayor to sign that. So that's, that's what you have in front of you. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Let go. No, no, I just want an explanation on it.
All right, then, fine. Then, under items, thank you very much, sir. For under item seven, the city administration, the resolution authorizing interest rate modifications to Highland Park State Revolving Fund Program Bonds. Motion was made on the floor by Councilwoman Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on item seven?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight. From the city council. I'm assuming that everyone had an opportunity to look at the schedule for the year.
Yes.
Yep, and this is in alignment with every revolving, rotating year that I can remember being, looking at a city council agenda. So, city council,
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Support with questions.
We have second from Councilman Al Shafi with questions. Go right ahead.
Okay, so, um, I'm just curious if someone could tell me, as to why we didn't come back on the eighth as opposed to the sixteenth? I get that the fifteenth is a holiday. I'm just curious as to why we waited a whole nother week to come back on the sixteenth of January?
Mr. Al Shafi, yes, in the charter, if you will read the charter, if you have a copy, go right to the
I'm just answering the question, Council President.
Yes, and I'm trying, I'm attempting to address this question, because this is a simple city council question, and anybody, any member could have gone to the clerk, any member could have gone to the attorney. I'm answering your question. It says the first and third Monday, does it not? Okay, and the first Monday is January the what?
It's New Year's Day.
Correct, which is an official government holiday. Okay, so there is no government business conducted on that day.
No doubt about it.
The next day, according to the charter, which would be the third Monday, is also a holiday. What do we do? What do we do when we have a federally observed holiday on the same day as a city council meeting? It is pushed to the next day. This is not anything new.
All I am simply
I'm answering your question, sir.
I understand that. All I'm simply asking, will, you know, without the sarcasm and the small remarks.
It's in the charter.
I understand that the eighth is the following week, and it's a Monday. And there is no holiday on that day.
The charter.
So why do they get pushed all the way to the sixteenth?
It's in the charter. It says the first and third.
To any town, there's a holiday, it's either the next day that we meet or the following week, not two weeks later, sir.
Okay. So
I'm just, I'm going on standard practices here in the City of Highland Park. It's always been that way. I'm just curious, what's the difference today? Not trying to be difficult. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. I just asked a simple question.
The clerk is here. The clerk can answer your additional questions. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please?
Past practice with the first meeting of the year falling at the beginning of the year and the building being closed, being closed on Christmas, that also prohibit, not prohibits, but there's no one working to put the agenda together to submit items. So historically, the first meeting of the year is held on that third, the third is the first meeting of the year.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. At least somebody gave it to me without the sarcasm.
All right, so Madam, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on item eight?
Fucking
Madam Pro Tim?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. So we're voting on workshops and regular meetings, so workshops can't be canceled because we're voting on, is that correct?
No, it says for workshop. It's workshops and regularly. A workshop is at the, at the at the pleasure of the council president, as it always have been. We didn't have an organizational meeting.
Right, so, but we have, we're voting on this today.
Yeah, correct. This is our schedule.
So we're voting on it? And you telling me that you still can cancel them?
Ma'am, I'm the only person that can schedule them. That's been clear for as long as you've been
That's that bullshit right there.
So you're telling me that you can cancel them after we vote on today?
Ma'am, it says on these days.
It's a simple yes or no.
It says workshop and regularly. Are these the correct days?
It's just a simple yes or no.
Oh. Ma'am, you asking me to reach into the future and tell you whether or not I'm gonna schedule a meeting? That's the day. It says on that day. That day is set aside for workshops and meetings, just like today was set aside for a workshop and a regular meeting. I'm answering your question.
No, you're not.
Okay.
No, you're not.
You said, we haven't even scheduled a workshop. And you're asking me to tell you whether or not we're gonna have one on all of these days?
The workshop, sir.
It says for, it's for the workshop and the meeting. Madam Deputy Clerk, can we call the roll on this item, please? Item eight, approval of the schedule?
Councilwoman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman?
Go wait till Councilwoman Martin gets back.
Oh.
So the
How nice of you to wait.
The people from the Detroit Documenters that are here, this is something that needs to be this is something that needs to be in your next story.
How nice of you to wait. You sure as hell don't get up and wait when I leave. And we gonna wait on Ms. Martin. You sure as hell don't wait when I get up and leave. And we gonna wait on Ms. Martin. You sure as hell don't wait when I get up and leave. Call it like I see it. Yeah, so nice of us to wait on Ms. Martin.
Thank you for your vote.
Yeah, blow me.
Sir, anytime you want to talk to me one-on-one?
Anytime you ready. Anytime you ready, Council President. Anytime.
Hey, I'm going to ask both you guys to maintain your professionalism. This is a meeting that's being recorded.
Absolutely, sir.
In public.
He just said to me, if he wanted me to talk in private.
I know, and you said.
Sounds like a threat to me. Anytime you ready?
You've said some inappropriate.
Anytime he's ready.
So I think both of you, let's, let's try and make the City of Highland Park look decent. And let's refrain from any of this and get through this meeting, please.
Thank you, Chief. To my point, if there are members on a board that have disagreements, the other boards I've sat in, they have a problem, they leave the board and they go sit down like grown men and they have a conversation. I know that's a challenge. I know that might be a challenge for some people. But proper decorum is supposed to be maintained during a meeting. So people have disagreements, you should, like men, should be able to go sit down and have a conversation outside of the framework of the meeting to address those issues. Very rarely do I see ladies have this problem, because if ladies have some issues, they go sit down like ladies and they talk about them, and then they come back and they handle their business. So I am very sorry, citizens of Highland Park, that the level of expectation that I have of being civil is not shared by all. Ms. Manica?
Be civil all day.
So can I, I just wanted to revisit something real quick.
Yep, we have, we have a vote open on the floor, so we're just waiting for Ms. Martin wherever she is.
Am I allowed to?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, yep, yep. Ms. Martin, we were about to call the vote. I want me to ambush you with information. We were about to call the vote on item eight. That is the approval of the schedule for 2024.
It's a yes for me.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Ms. Manica, yes?
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Manica, forgive me if I wanted to make sure that we handled the item that was on the floor as it related to that. Okay, thank you very much. For next, for item nine of the community development, we have resolution authorizing the special land use variance for indoor storage at 15004 Third and at 15001 Second. City Council, what is your pleasure on item nine A?
I move to approve the special land use variance for indoor storage at 15004 Third and 15001 Second with question.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have support?
Support.
Support for Ms. Martin. Ms. Manica, you have questions, if you will, please?
Yes, is someone here for? I'm sorry, someone here for this?
I'm on Zoom.
Okay, can you just kind of explain it to city council what you're asking and why you need a variance or what is a variance?
You go, would you, sorry, just by introducing yourself, sir, you're on Zoom and the audience doesn't know who you are. If you'd be kind enough to do that?
Sure, my name is Matt Parnello. I am general counsel to Star Highland Park, who is the soon-to-be purchaser as of January 18, 2024 of this parcel on Third and Second Streets. What we are asking for is a special land use variance because currently there is not mentioned into the code a self-storage provision. So what we are requesting is that that language be added into and a special land use be, variance be granted for our use of the building as an indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility.
Did you address your question, ma'am?
What are you currently using it for?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Same thing. What are you currently using it for? Is this additional or?
No, we, we currently do not own the building, but it is currently, it has one tenant in there. It has industrial use tenant in there right now, but we currently do not own it. We are under contract with no further contingencies and are just waiting upon approval so that we can proceed to closing. So most of the buildings are empty or building.
Your closing is dependent upon the vote today. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
You're buying it from a private owner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Shafi?
Council President, this doesn't sound like a variance. It sounds like an ordinance to me. It sounds like we need to make an ordinance.
So, Mr. Shafi?
Particular, hold on a second. Sounds like that we need to make an ordinance for this particular item. I mean, it's storage, okay, in an area that is not zoned nor made for storage, you know? And I'm just, I'm curious as to should this be a variance or should this be an ordinance? If, if legal could give me an opinion, I would greatly appreciate it.
Listen, before we go to that legal opinion, so this was adjudicated by Planning Commission. Planning Commission has the ordinance, they have the zoning, they have the master plan. They asked for a variance for special land use. There is a set code of standard uses that goes across our community, Wayne County, State of Michigan, United States of America. To ask for a variance means they are asking for a slightly different use of that property, which should be within bounds. We have our building inspector here who could probably speak to that. But all of those questions were addressed by Planning Commission. I'm sure Mr. Motley did his due diligence, looked at the zoning ordinance, looked at the city ordinances, looked at the master plan and thought this was feasible or he would not have sent this to city council to vote on. And all of these items listed here have had due diligence done by the planning commissioners, they're multiple, and the building department.
What is the ordinance?
You're asking me what is the ordinance for this particular variance and the ordinance book has what, 100?
An ordinance. I figure since you spoke on it, that you know what the ordinance is.
I said the planning commission reviews ordinances related to this.
Maybe, so, so maybe, Council President, it'd be a smart idea to let the attorney speak as opposed to you speak.
How you doing, Mr. Hayward? Do you want to go ahead and jump in?
Council President and local members, this project had been reviewed by the CED department and had gone through the typical protocol. The city planner looked at it.
What's the one that's Mr. Hayward?
Beg your pardon?
They went through all the ordinances.
Section 1270. In our zoning ordinance, section 1270 describes all the principal and permitted uses, the uses that require special land uses or variances. It was reviewed, at the time that the ordinance was written, storage, indoor storage, climate-controlled was not identified.
Is it just 1270?
1270.
It's not 1250?
Beg your pardon?
Is it 1270 or 1250?
1250, yes.
1250, 12, when I typed in 1270, 1250 came up, actually. I'll have the zoning ordinance. Let me put this on the screen.
With all the principal permitted uses. So our planner had reviewed it and recommended, since that wasn't a category that was identified back then, that that was the next closest use. But that would still need a special land use at that location and is currently owned and occupied by another company or owner. And Matthew Parnello is representing the new owner. The project is, as it's proposed, would be a very low impact to the site because it's indoor storage, wouldn't be a heavy traffic area.
They got the exact building. It's their dairy building over there.
Exactly, and they're, they're looking to only improve the site and no other construction.
1250.01, I got it on the screen. Under B, special land use? Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hayward.
Madam Proton, I saw your hand up.
I just wanted citizens to know that that's on various sites across the town.
Okay, Ms. Manica?
Where are we going to be storing it?
That would be private persons coming in. It's like when you see Cube Storage or, well, no, it's indoor storage, so they haven't presented or requested any outdoor storage of trucks or anything. It's all interior. So again, it's a low impact to the neighborhood where everything is inside and nothing's left outside being an eyesore.
So I could come in?
You could come in and rent a 10 by 10 storied space or whatever size that you needed.
So that's, that's the, that's that building that's diagonal from the rec center, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's two buildings.
Right next to the greenway, that, that brown building next to the greenway.
They're purchasing it from the present owner.
Yeah, that brown building is right next to the greenway across from the rec center. You're correct.
So it's a private sale.
Yeah.
Is it storing what in there? Thank you. Somebody's singing it out loud. All right, okay.
Any private person would be allowed to come in and, just like you do at any of the other storage facilities that you see. That's what this is being proposed as, is in indoor climate storage.
Is there restriction on chemicals, anything of that nature?
That, I, no, I would not say, I would have to defer that to the police department. But typically indoor storage, I have never experienced anybody being outside of the limits.
Sorry, what was the question? I couldn't hear?
Is there any chemical storage?
Oh, no, no way. So we, we use, we use one of two nationally traded companies, either Cube Smart or Extra Space, and they are the managers of the self-storage facility. And they have a long list of items that you cannot store, and certainly chemicals are, are one of those.
And you walked in the building and expected to build?
No, because they haven't purchased the building yet. They will eventually go through the building department with plans as far as doing the layout of the storage arrangement.
Fire respect.
Cube, correct.
Okay.
But that'll come at a later date, and this is just to give them the special land use in order to proceed with the closing of the private land sale.
So what's being asked of us today?
Just to approve the special land use because storage was not identified in the groups on our zoning.
I'm sorry, I'm just down and I'm a little confused. I think it's a great thing to have a storage facility in a building. So I'm asking you, if that residents can come and store in this building, they're going to be able to walk up and say, hey, I need a storage facility to store some things?
Yes.
Okay. So this is my question to the leaders.
Yes.
They're asking for, for the purchases. Why isn't the person who's owns it asking for that?
Because they're the ones that are going to be using it. If they're the purchasers, then that's their intended use for the property. If they're not going to be able to get the special land use variance, then there's no need to purchase the property. So that's why.
Is there any liability for the city, any?
Now that I can see in terms of a self-storage unit, I mean, they still have to go back to get the various permits. And so this is just for a different use of the property, something that's not identified in section 1250.04 currently.
Pretty much forgotten.
It's just because it's not listed, it's not identified. There's a list of items, but this is not one. A storage facility is not one. So they're coming to council saying, we need this special land use variance to use this land in a manner that's not clearly identified. And then once they get that, then they still have to go back and get the various permits and at that point, they still would have to go back to planning after that as well.
Yes, they, yes. Okay, on item nine A, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Shafi?
I'm here on the side of caution to say no.
Councilwoman Martin? And we're just approving the variance, right? How it's being used?
Correct.
Yes. Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yeah, yeah, and before I vote, this is a private investor who's coming to the city to spend, that property is over, what is it, a million they're asking for? Million, two million? So we have somebody that wants to come to this town and spend $2 million.
Well over that.
Well over, and all they asked for was a variance to be able to proceed with their deal, to come and invest in our town. They could invest anyplace else. So stop talking, gentlemen. I'm voting yes on this, but I cannot believe it came down to one vote of standing in the way of this private entity coming to our town to do business to get a simple variance. It's a simple variance. This is ridiculous. The motion carries. Motion carries. Moving on to nine, moving on to item nine B under community development, resolution authorizing a variance at 20 Bartlett for parking between the right way and main building, maximum lot coverage of 25 to 50% and sign height of 25 feet to 40 feet. City Council, what is your pleasure on item nine B?
I want to make a motion for the resolution to authorize variance at 20 Bartlett for parking between the right way and main building, maximum lot coverage of 25% to 50%, sign height of 20 feet to 40 feet.
Under community development, item B, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to approve this resolution. Do we have support? We have support from Councilwoman Manica. Thank you very much. The floor is open. You have questions, Mr. Shafi?
I do have questions. Mr. Code is here.
Parties for item B at 20 Bartlett. Do we have those individuals here?
Well, I need my glasses. I need my glasses. I need to see you standing there, buddy.
That's okay.
All right, please.
Do you have questions? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. First of all, thank you very much, Honorable Counsel, for hearing our request tonight. Eighteen years ago, my partner Mark Thomas and I built the shopping center in the, in the City of Highland Park. We believe it's the finest one in southeast Michigan, the shops at Woodbridge Place. It was built and it was managed at the highest level for the citizens of this great city. We've been committed to Highland Park ever since, and now we want to add more first-class goods and services to Highland Park. Our develop, with our development partner Fias Simon, we'll explain the newest development. But what we're, what we're proposing, and do we have the video? Has the video been shown? Has a council member seen the video? I think we've sent it all out.
Okay, so no video?
Can you put it on? Mr. Lackey, can you put it up?
I don't know who's here in the video.
Which one of you? I didn't receive a document. They sent it to me.
Hi, Charles. I just tried to share, as you mentioned in the email earlier today, and it just says that I don't have access to share. Would it be easier if I just email you a link?
What's your name?
Chad, old with the Green Tech Engineering projects.
Okay, you have permission.
Thank you.
And while he's doing that, we've, we've brought all of our engineers, our architects. So this is a complete gas plaza with EV charging stations in, in full-service food operations. Okay, Madam Proton, I see your hand.
Yes. The fifth word as states, section one, two, two, three point zero three of the Highland Park zoning code does not allow for parking between right of way and the main building structure. So you're asking us to vote against that zone?
Correct, yes, we need a variance for that, correct.
And Council President.
If you would, for the explanation of the variance.
Yes, all of the variances, the three variances requested, again, it's through the planning commission and reviewed and recommended for approval. The parking would be off the parking area in question. Off the side street and that entry in the building due to getting the required number of parking spaces and also to maintain the traffic flow there. The second variance is the amount of lot coverage. And then the third is for a pole sign to be higher than what is typically allowed.
So that lots, it's already, it's already a lot there. That same lot you're speaking on, sir, if you want to add more spaces, I'm not understanding.
Yes, we're going to change the building, so there, there will be spaces between the curb and the building itself. And the reason for that is we're not asking for any curb cuts on Woodward. You'll enter this property from the Bartlett Street so that there'll be no traffic issues and no traffic hazards.
And then the building that you're asking about is, no, that will not remain. That's going to be demolished now as well. So the current lot at Woodward and Bartlett is a vacant lot. The developer owns that building next to it. They're going to be demolished from that building and completely reconstructed in a brand-new facility there. The eight thousand square foot building plus the gas pump items.
In that lot right now?
No, it includes the, the two buildings behind it, it's actually twenty dash thirty-two Bartlett. So it's actually three properties together, all in one, a little over an acre of land, and it's about a six million dollar development.
So when I vote then, because you know there's a lot of asbestos in that here.
Yes, there is, there's a contamination, we've done phase one, phase two, and BEAs, and it will all be cleaned up to commercial standards.
Have we done anything for the?
The Chair recognizes Ms. Manica, I see your hand over here, Ms. Manica, Mr. Ashafi, just raise your hand next time, would you? Ms. Manica? Yeah, I mean, just, just, just raise your hand, that's all, all the other ladies have raised their hand, you'd be kind enough to do so.
So I noticed in the video. Yeah, Shane's, all those wonderful places in the video makes me hungry. It makes me hungry, it makes me want to know that they come.
Well, here's, again, we have our development partner Faiyaz Simon here. What you just saw was his station at thirteen and Ryan. So that's a station that he just built about a year ago, opened it up about a year ago. That's an existing station, that's an existing video of exactly what he has and what he's proposing here too. Mr. Ashafi?
Will this council be given environmental studies? And, and blueprints of the engineering of, of the plumbing work that you're going to put on the ground? This is going to be, be new construction, I know there's going to be a, a lot of new plumbing that's going to go on the ground as well as tanks for the, for the gas station pumps, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it would have been nice to have that here now, but are we going to see that is the question I want to know.
Councilman, no, you won't receive those drawings. Is this not under your preview? This under the city engineer and the building department will handle all the applications and reviews. The planning commission has already given preliminary site plan approval with the plans of this site. And once the variances, if they get passed here, they'll be returning back to the planning commission members. They've already started going through the formal process of the site plan review with the engineer for the engineering portion. Once that's all completed, they will go back to the planning commission to get the final site plan. But the detailed engineering information is insured with the city council.
Okay, if I may, but if, I think what you're looking for.
For the record.
For the record.
Okay. For the record, okay. A detailed report is supposed to be submitted to council about what's being placed underneath the ground. Now, whether you want to show us the blueprints or not, that's fine, but the engineer needs to give us a full report as to what's going underneath the ground. And we need to be made clear that everything is going to be well-done in a professional manner so we don't have any issues later on down the line and connecting to the city of Detroit, who has a tendency to run through us and we're connecting to them. Okay, so for, so, so for the record, please don't ever tell me that there's something about development that you're not going to give us. That really just, that, that really just makes my ass itch, sir.
If I may. Mr. Curse, if you would, please, you're an experienced developer, so I'm, I'm interested in what you have to say. You kind of do this for a living, so.
Don't ever tell us what you're not going to give us.
Councilman, if I may.
Especially if you're asking us to approve.
Mr. Ashafi, if you're gonna, are you gonna let the gentleman respond or what? Yeah, Councilman, if I may, I, I think what the answer was is the formal process does not have us bring the engineering drawings to the city council. It does have us bring the engineering drawings to the planning commission, to the building department. So the city will have those documents on file and it's public record, anybody can, anybody can see those documents. So they will be here at the city.
Now, I like that answer that it did, which you're not going to give us.
Madam Proton, if you would.
Okay, so, for the record, if we approve this tonight, then that goes all the way back to everything else that's going to get approved, that's approved next. Sophia Coffee is going to be approved? Because it's the same thing, it's, you want us to vote against the zoning code? So, Sophia Coffee and Aphrodisiac.
I'm sorry.
I have to.
To the citizens of Highland Park.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Manica, you had your hand up?
I don't know, I usually don't frown, but I'm frowning. I like you, but we need some very good businesses and I think this is wonderful. And I think that everybody throws those wonderful, now they're already going to put six million dollars, whatever it is. But I seen liquor, and then my other question is, we got a gas station right on the other side, this is no problem. So we're going to have a gas station that's on Bartlett, not facing Woodward. Is that what I understood?
No, it's facing Woodward.
The gas station is facing Woodward, but you have to drive in Bartlett to get to the gas station?
Yes, we can't have a curb cut on Woodward because, because of the danger and because of the, the traffic that it would, problems that it would create. So we're accepting a curb cut only on Bartlett. You've got to come down Woodward and then turn onto Bartlett to get into the property.
So this is, I know we have this to hear, but you own the property here.
Correct.
So you're still going to be a part of it?
Yes.
And so I'm looking out there and you said a gentleman owned on, where was it again?
Thirteen and Ryan.
Thirteen and Ryan, I hope to see you tomorrow. I want to see those businesses, it don't have to be for Shane's, but I want to see something like that. I, I want to see all of that if we say yes to this. So I know the mini mall, I don't want businesses like we have in the mini mall, some of them right now. I'm complaining constantly about them, Dollar Tree. So I need to know that, I guess, I don't know, if I was looking at you or looking at them, they're going to maintain or make sure those businesses are up kept and give us the best they give anywhere else. Between this and everyone.
Thank you, and that, and that's, that's what we want. We have our, we have our parking lot hand swept three times a day. Three times a day, not once, three times a day. We built it to the highest level, we tended it to the highest level, we manage it to the highest level, and that's what you're going to get here. We, we already have a development with Faiyaz, they have a, a gas station across from our Mack and Alter Shopping Center in Detroit. So it's the same partner that we've had for twenty years and he's coming here, he wants to be in Highland Park. And that's why we wanted to show you the video to show you exactly the quality that he does.
Again, doesn't change what I'm saying.
Yes.
Because I go in Family Dollar or whatever, Dollar Tree, and it's dirty. And so I need to know that somebody is going to manage the fact that this company is giving us horrible. So I want another big company or companies and I go in there and it's horrible. And I understand, you only own the property, you don't own Dollar Tree, but I, I can't continue this because I hate going, I don't know if you see it right now, it's dirty. And nobody seems to care or saying anything, and then you have several other businesses, now all this is pretty good. But when I go in that end, there's a problem. Because when I go to any other Dollar Tree, way out there, it does not look like that.
Right.
Yes, sir, you came up to say that.
Good evening, Councilor.
How are you, sir?
My name is Faiyaz Simon. My family been in this business since nineteen seventy-three. I'm sixty-two years old, and I was pumping gas, at that time it was all full serve, no self-serve. I grew up in this business and we celebrated thirty years, been in the city of Detroit on Mack and Alter. We built that beautiful location up there. And this particular location is not going to be just a fuel business. It's going to be EV, we've got a lot of cars go through Woodward, go straight downtown Detroit and coming back. You need nice and bright-looking site, brand-new site. And with, I, I urge you to go to thirteen and Ryan and see how nice and bright this store, you feel comfortable going in there. I don't want to put down any gas station around this area, I'm not putting that down. But when you have a brand-new facility with a brand-new LED lights, clean facility, open door and closes door automatic, and employee with all uniform, bringing the customers and thanking the customers and also hiring local employees within the area up here, that's my, my, my.
There you go.
My, of course, and I went to all the market supermarkets, I went in there and I was amazed how they kept that place clean and the employees there are friendly. I want to do the same thing in this community here as well. Now, we do make our own food, we prepare our own food, so the community here want a fresh, prepared food for the person who want to go to work, take that with them, we will do that. You come in to thirteen Ryan, you'll see we've got a chef up there that produces food all in-house. The pasta, the chicken, the salads that we produce, the Einstein bagel brother, we make our own bagels up there and we have Einstein Bagel, we also have the Poshayn's Pizza and stuff.
I'm not going to prolong this, but I noticed that we went from Einstein and Bagel to you having your own chef and making, that's fine, no need to comment.
I see you, Ms. Martin, they're the franchisee.
Yeah, I am the franchise, I own my own franchise, so it's not like someone else running.
All I wanted is to be clean, continuous, we, we all start off clean, but down the road, I wanted to continue. But seeing as how it's going to be right next to the Greenway.
That's the other thing, on the Greenway, you're going to open to that Greenway. People come in, I'm a runner, I've done marathons and I bike as well. And I use a defender cut and all that kind of thing, so I do ride every Saturday to Detroit, downtown Detroit from telegraph and Long Lake all the way to there, back and forth, we do about sixteen miles with a group of guys. So I know that the defender cut is important and that's going to be the Joe Louis Greenway to our property for people to come in, park their bikes or walking or running, if you know, and come in and have a nice breakfast, have a nice lunch, and also dinner. So I've been in the business a long time, I care about the community, I care about the customers. I'm not just here to develop something, I'm not, I'm an operator.
I thank you, Mr. Simon.
You're welcome. F-A-I-Z, pronounced Faiyaz, and the last name Simon, S-I-M-O-N.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, you had a question as well?
Yes, I do. I agree with you about that Dollar Tree, it seems like the door is always broken, cracked or boarded, so I agree with you on that and it's always seen dirty, so I agree with you on that, Manica. Also, I'm excited about it, you know what I mean? I feel like Highland Park deserves something like this, we need something. It's kind of like we need a facelift and this will be that. I think that it will have other gas stations, you know, I think they will either come up or leave, a lot of them are just not that safe. So I have a couple of questions, my first question is, it does seem like a nice facility, are there going to be like cameras? Were you guys going to, you know? And then my second question is, where are the trucks that come to stop? Are they coming from Bartlett, is that where they're entering as well?
Correct. So I'll answer a question that he had concern on the underground tanks, the piping, all that. So currently right now, two thousand three, the underground tanks and the piping is much, much better than any time before. There's so much security when it comes to the tanks, if there's a leak, it's tank within the tank. The pipes are, pipe within a pipe, so if there's a leak, for example, alarm will come on, shuts everything off right away. So you won't, you won't have any problem on those, there's underground alarm and also will dictate, we have a meter root machine that will tell us exactly if there's anything short. So to answer the question on the camera, currently at thirteen and Ryan, we have three cameras, so twenty-four hours, because we are open twenty-four hours, we will be open twenty-four hours up here, that will maintain the place clean. We have the midnight people, all they do, have a full-time staff, they do nothing but cleaning the site. They have a first shift and second shift, also the midnight people also clean, that's part of the job. And we have a machine that cleans the floor as well. So, and you can have a security there as well, that's the plan, we're going to have a security and there's no bolted brass glass, by the way. I don't, some people put in, put a bolted glass, they want to get connected with people, I don't do that. My station will be open to the consumer, there's no glass with the customer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, so on item nine B, resolution authorizing the variance at twenty Bartlett for parking between the right of way and main building, maximum lot coverage of twenty-five to fifty percent and a sign height of twenty-five to fifty. Mr. Ashafi?
Council President.
This is just, this is.
No, 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 no.
Every member has two, I'm just making a statement before you start.
I'm not, I'm not making a statement, I'm asking you something. Before we vote, can I go to the bathroom real quick?
Why don't we just vote and then you can go to the bathroom?
How about I, how about I go to the bathroom and didn't vote? I mean, you were willing to wait for Ms. Martin, I'm sure.
No, we're, we're here, so let's just go ahead and get the vote, let the gentleman go to the bathroom. Would you call to roll on item nine B, please?
Councilman Ashafi.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martin.
Yes.
And Mr. Haywood should not have spoken.
Councilwoman Manica, Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Thank you very much, yes, the motion carries. So moving on to Community Development. If you need to go to the restroom, sir, we all, most of us are adults, go right ahead. Go right ahead. Community Development, Resolution one eighty, or Resolution for one eighty Manchester authorizing site. Community development, resolution one eighty, or a resolution for one eighty Manchester authorizing side setback variance from seventy-five feet to forty-five feet with sixty-eight point seven east. Rear setback variance from seventy-five feet, two point six feet and lot coverage variance from forty to seventy-eight point, point five percent. Um, City Council, what is your pleasure on item C?
I move to approve.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin, I'm sorry, Manica to approve. Um, this resolution, do we have support? The chair will offer support. The floor is open. Would you be kind enough to wait until the gentleman returns?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve this item made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by the chair. We will wait until the councilman from the third district returns to his seat so that he can hear from the parties that are here. Okay, okay. Yeah, that probably be appropriate. So we only got these last three items, so she don't take us another hour. Prior to nine of the community development, a resolution for the one eighty Manchester authorizing side variance uh, from seventy-five feet to forty-five feet west, sixty-eight point seven east, rear setback variance from seventy-five feet to point six feet and lot coverage variance from forty to seventy-eight point five percent. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by the chair. Ms. Manica, you said you had questions?
Wasn't a question. Just, well.
You wanted to hear from the party, so we, we, okay.
Yes, I was. Hi, my name is Megan Hicks. I am a representative for Micro Auto Group. Hi, I'm president and council. Thank you for having me and listening to us. So we are um, an auto parts business, um, and we've been in business for seventy-five years and we are running out of space in our headquarters. And we are trying to build a cold storage building on one of our yards, just our banquet yard. And um, we've been approved or recommended it for approval by the planning commission. And yeah.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have questions? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll for item C on the community development?
Councilman Shafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just getting my blood sugar together here for a second. For item ten under finance, this is the monthly financial statement. This is a simple, I'm sorry. So under finance, we will take up, I'm willing to take up action by City Council on item ten. This is December. We've been doing this eleven times. This is our monthly financial statement for the month of November. City Council, what is your pleasure? So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to receive and file the statement. Ms. Martin, did I hear you say that you had questions? You wanted to, you voted in favor? You said with support request?
Favor. I just want to know if we can create a chart. That's it.
So we have support. Are you offering support as a second?
Support.
So Ms. Martin is offering support. So this is under item ten. This is the uh, motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to receive and file the monthly financial statement. Ms. Martin offered a second. Her request is that we create a chart for this. Um, so if we could call the roll on item ten for finance to receive and file the monthly financial statement for the month of November twenty twenty-three, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would.
Councilman Shafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes. Ma'am, if you-
Do not, don't even think about it. She has the right to her vote.
Excuse me, sir. I think that she was talking to me. Yes, ma'am.
Don't even think about it.
Why not support? Right, and then say no. I would like a chart.
It's perfectly, it's, it's perfectly fine. She wanted to move with the vote.
You do not have to explain your vote.
Excuse me, sir. You are not the chair.
I, I always get that.
You do not have to explain your vote to them. How you vote is your business.
I know, I know.
Disrupting the meeting.
So who are they to ask you why you do that?
Okay, so moving on to item, this is item eleven of the Public Works Resolution to repair one heavy-duty DPW truck. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve. I support with questions and statements.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the repair for one heavy-duty DPW truck. We have support from Pro Tim with questions. Madam Pro Tim, you have the floor.
Yes. Okay. They're going to approve this because snow is coming. Okay, but these cars are scarce. So we can slow and plow one time and it breaks down again. I would much rather have a revolution come in front of me where we can purchase a new vehicle that we can find cars for.
Think you found one today for seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, let's call for the, we have somebody calling for the, Ms. um, Madam Pro Tim.
Is it a chance it will break down again?
It can't be anything that will break down.
Is that a yes?
Car.
That, that's a yes. That's a yes. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Al Shafi.
Um, Mr. Reese.
Yes.
How old is this truck? I'm being told it's a nineteen ninety. That's thirty-three years.
No, I believe that truck is a oh-three.
That truck is oh-three?
Yes. I believe that truck is, I believe that's the oh-three.
Yeah, oh, second. I didn't see oh-three on here. Reason I ask that question, Mr. Reese.
Yes.
I don't see the year on here for this vehicle. I don't see what year it is. Uh, the reason I ask that question because I I had a resident send me six estimates today of a two thousand and thirteen truck in mint condition with very little mileage on it for under ten thousand dollars. And we're about to be, and we're about to spend sixteen thousand to repair this truck.
And it may break down again.
Eh 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 eh, and it's just like Ms. Martin said, it may break down again. I understand that it needs to be fixed. I'm just concerned. Maybe we could fix this truck and look for a new truck. I could send you those, those estimates that the residents said to me, it's a very nice truck, very low mileage, exactly what you need for under ten thousand dollars.
Please do.
Okay.
No problem.
You know what I'm saying? But yeah, you know, you know, I, I, I am concerned and I don't appreciate the newspaper article from the mayor and council president talking trash about Ms. Martin and Ms. uh, Ms. Ms. Robinson about how they voted. No, they, they had information I didn't have. If I had the information they had, you would have got a vote of no from me at the last council meeting as well, too.
Sorry.
Okay. No, 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 no. I'm not picking on you per se. I'm just talking to Jen, okay? You know what I'm saying? The price tag was outrageous. And then we're looking at a company that has only been in business for a year. And then they're told, y'all, they're not actually a repair service, truck service, according to their website. Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I know you did, I, I know you did what you could do. And this truck definitely needs to be fixed. But like I said, if I didn't know what they knew ahead of time, you would have gotten a vote of no out of me as well. You know what I'm saying? So I stand with my council members in the fact that we need to do a little bit better. So let's fix this truck, get it up and running. And you need to come back with us with a resolution for a new truck, because we need to purchase one. Please. Thank you so much.
All right, let's call for the vote on item nine, the Public Works Resolution to repair one heavy-duty DPW truck. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would.
Councilman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item-
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
What is this now? What is this item? Twelve underwater resolution for the conditional approval of the interim amended fiscal year twenty twenty-four water department budget and rates. And I see the whole legal team over there, along with Judge, Judge Ration. Thank you very much for being here. This is what we've all been waiting for. So City Council, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve with questions.
So this is what the governor is waiting to see tonight, what we do here, all that hard work. What are those questions, sir?
Uh, if somebody could come up here and give the residents a brief overview, I greatly appreciate it. If somebody could get up off their cane.
I think that that's what Mr. Garrett did before the public hearing.
I still need another repeat for the residents, please.
The residents were here.
It's not that hard for somebody to come up here and talk to me about this. It's not that complicated. Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
I'm not scared.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. I appreciate it.
So, so what, the first thing we need to do, because I said I was going to do it, is they ask questions. We took notes on the questions that they asked. So regardless of whatever happened, I was going to go through what I heard and do my best to answer that. Would you like to speak before I answer these questions? Madam Pro Tim.
I see your hand, Madam Pro Tim.
Okay, all right. So the first question that we had was during the public uh, comment before the public hearing. And the question was, how did we come up with the rates without meters being installed, which was a very good question? So the rates, we, we came up with the rates based on the expenses that we incur. And the rates have to generate revenue to offset those expenses, okay? So we don't have meters and that's part of this whole argument. So we have a bill that we received that we disputed for ten years and now we're going to get meters. But we have the bills that we received from Gleewa that say you need to pay X dollars. You take that money and you break that down into establish the revenue to offset that expense. So that is how the, the, the rates were set without meters. Now, moving forward, you will have, well, a couple of things. Part of the term sheet, we, we are required to hire an outside uh, outside rate consultant. There was another question that we'll get to. They need to come in in the spring and evaluate the current rates and make recommendations. That's part of the term sheet. That's happening every year. When, when the meters are actually in the ground for over a year, we will have empirical data that then we will be able to look at that data and how much water we're actually using and compare that to what is being estimated, was being estimated and do the adjustment. So that's kind of how, that's how the rates were established in, in a nutshell. Ms. Fry asked uh, about the residents are still paying the bill, which is true. We understand that Ms. Stafford talked about the businesses are gone. The people who are paying the bills are the people who are here. We, we can't do anything about that at this current time. So until development transpires, this is going to be what it's going to be until we can get the development in here. Um, she also said that the water department in Gleewa made the contract. Why wasn't the plant included in the contract? So back in twenty seventeen, the city uh, entered into an administrative consent order with the state of Michigan to do certain things. There was, I don't know, maybe sixteen or seventeen things in that document that we needed to do. The, the last thing that we have not done is repair all the water main. And why? Because we don't have the money to do that. So now they've set aside the money to do that. We, we fought, we've clawed, we've talked about the plant, we've, the legal team has talked about the plant, Ms. Square has talked about the plant, everybody's talked about the plant. We can't make any progress on that until we meet the legal obligations that we're currently under. So we're not quite ready to have leverage to have that conversation anymore than we've had to this point. So that's, the plant has been discussed. It continues to get discussed. Now we're augmenting, talking about a tower. So the, the, we understand that the city wants control of their water system. That's what that's all about. But we are trying to do all the things that we're obligated to do legally so that we can get in a position to, to have that conversation. We're not quite there yet. That's the deal with the plant. Uh, Ms. Stafford said, we're not listening to the residents. She doesn't understand what happened, what, what happened with the companies. So basically, the companies left, the people left, and what we have is the eight thousand people that are remaining. I don't know where the, I don't know where the Chrysler went. I mean, I know where they went. But right now, we, we need to fix the infrastructure and we need to make our city attractive to bring these developers. You know, people like you had tonight and more people like that that want to come in and, and be users of the water and sewer. That's how we're going to get forward. So we can't, we, the, the companies that are here are gone, but we can certainly continue to attract more companies and bring them here. Uh, Ms. Wheeler wants to know, when would the rates start? So if the rates were approved in January, so that, so in order for them to go into the bills, they have to be done by the twentieth of that month. So if there was a vote today that was positive, they would be in the February bill because then that would be given reflected by January twentieth, would make it happen in the February bill. So the, the bill would remain the same for this month and January. And the first time you would see that increase would be in February. So if it, if it gets moved, it's, it's the twentieth every month. So it could be March, it could be April. It all depends on when that's approved. Uh, Ms. Wheeler is talking about Lansing and, and also talking about the residents being overburdened, um, looking for a different classification. Uh, you know, and to diversify the amount of grants that we're, we're going for. Uh, we're certainly open to that. Uh, you've, you've heard at the town hall, uh, you know, we brought over fifty, fifty-one million dollars into the city since we've been here. Twenty, I think twenty million has been loaned, thirty million has been grant. We got a hundred million on the table. But there's certainly still more infrastructure out there, money, and we aggressively are pursuing that all the time. So that's kind of, but the reclassification is something that we haven't discussed. So I don't know what the qualifications are on rural versus urban. I think they're similar, but they're a little different. And I don't know what puts you into the rural category and being in the rural category it opens you up to more funding. I, I don't know, but that's something that we can look into. Uh, Ms. Dolarsky wants to know, uh, well, that's where I got. So here it says she wants to know about how the residents were qualified for the thaw. Um, I, I don't, they've been changing the requirements to lessen the requirements. I do know that. I don't have the specific requirements for that, but I do know that uh, they freed up all this money and they want the residents of Highland Park to take advantage of that. I don't have the documentation, but I do know that. Uh, she also commented on the water budget. The budget was uh, at City Hall, we, we, it was posted. Um, I think it was November twenty-ninth or November twenty-seventh. It's been at City Hall and been at the water department uh, on display with the rate sheets for almost over two weeks. So we're, we're not hiding it. Um, she did have some comments on a version of the budget that we had before. There was an error in that. We fixed that error. She was aware of that when we were going to get on the meeting before. Uh, I don't think she's had or has not seen the revisions to the budget. Uh, the budget is, is pretty similar to what she saw before. The difference is, is we divided the budget into the first six months and the last six months. So right now in January, we'll be going into the last six months of the fiscal year. So we, we, we had to show what the expenses were for the first portion of the fiscal year. And then in the second portion of the fiscal year, the new rates were contemplated in that. So that's, that's what's out there and, and uh, we, we can, we can work with Lisa. She's, you know, very inquisitive. I, I hope we don't have a problem working with her. So we, we, we can do that. Um, she talked about gap funding and GS, GSAB. I could say that, you know, we have- She talked about gap funding and GSAB. I can say that, you know, we have, you know, certified accountants that work for us in our Water Department that are a little bit different than just pure finance people, because they are in the Water Department. They work with the billing clerk. They work with the operations people. It's, it's more diverse than you will probably find in most firms. So while people have a lot of questions, we welcome that, but I do stand behind our work and what we've done. Uh, Mr. Pacman, um, said he bought a house in the land bank. He thinks the drainage fee is unconstitutional. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about bulk case and tax versus fee. We went through that. We were in the lawsuit with MDOT about drainage. We, we've been there and gone through that. Um, the reason why we have the drainage fee is because we have combined sewer. So it has to be split out into a sewage piece and a drainage piece. Uh, it happens i- in City Detroit, and it's not uncommon in a lot of other communities that have combined utilities. Mr. McGee, um, I think, uh, commented on, um, having some focus and maybe understanding what the next few years look like and some progress. Um, so he was encouraged by that. Uh, he was surprised that we didn't have a sinking fund. Um, you know, just recently, we started getting into this whole enterprise fund. You know, we just used to report a deficit to the general fund, but as part of this lawsuit came up, they, they said that we can no longer do that. So I'm not opposed to looking at sinking fund, but we do not have one right now. Uh, Ms. Lofton.
I don't know if it's Ms. Lofton.
Is this, it is Ms. Lofton? Okay. Ms. Lofton went to Lansing. I, I, I had, Ms. Lofton was, uh, questioning the quali- quality of water. I don't, I don't know about her going to Lansing, but that, but.
She, she, did, did you go?
Okay, she went to. Um, I, I will say that, um, contrary to popular belief, the quality of water in Highland Park is at or above the state standard. Um, I understand that, you know, people smell chemicals. We've been accused of things. We post our consumer confidence report as required by Eagle on the city website. We, we don't have any corrections. So the, the water is, is fine to drink. Our lead levels are within check. So tha- that's what I can say about that. Okay. So if the wa- if the water, if the water was brown and we had elevated chemicals, lime, chlorine, we would, believe me, the state would, would give it to us. So I'm, you, you may not be happy, but I'm telling you, it's within the, the requirements that Eagle has. Okay. Okay, we, okay, Ms. Lofton, we, if you meet with me after the meeting, we can have our techs come out to your, to your house, and we can turn your fixtures on, and we can try to figure out what the problem is with the water at your home, okay? No, we're not gonna charge her for that. Good question. Uh, I, I, I didn't catch this gentleman's name. I, I think he said it was V. Ricardo, but I, I could be wrong. Um, he, he.
V. Ricardo Thomas.
Yeah. Oh, oh, V. Ricardo Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. Um, he wanted to know about the plant closing down. You know, we, we have been and continue to fight for the plant, but we have some other things that we need to do before we can make progress on that. I, I would say a more realistic, uh, request right now is the tower. You know, first, take this money that's on the table and get this distribution fixed so that you can say you met all your legal obligations. Then the meters have been in the ground for a year. Then you can look at what they're charging you now versus now you have metered results, so you could compare that. And then once you have that metered information, you can, uh, investigate a tower. And, uh, I think the tower would sit, could possibly save fifty percent on, on your water, just like I talked about drawing down the off-peak times and avoiding the peak hour charges that get applied to, to your water bill. And Mr. Leek, um, he wanted to know, w- was the plant, uh, contemplated in the contract renegotiations? Again, ever since I got here, it's been the plant, 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 plant. E- ever since I got here, I didn't even know what it was when I first got here, until I've been here for a little bit. But I understand what that is, and believe me, I sell legal counsel. Everybody has been leaning on everybody about the plant. So we, we got some other things that we need to do first before we can really, really do that. Um, he talked about gray water and efficiency. Um, those are all great ideas. He talked about hydraulic pumps. He, he said that the technology, water towers are old. It, it, it's not, it's not really old. Water towers have been around for a hundred years. It's still, there's still something. There are, there are, there, there is a lot of progressive technology out here, uh, that if we were or when we are able to have that conversation with, you know, reopening our water line and doing those kinds of things, we would be open to, to, you know, um, looking at technology and, and utilizing that to put the best and cleanest water in Highland Park. So those were the, those were the notes that I had. I did the best I could. My team did the best we could to answer those questions during the hearing.
Okay. So Mr. Garrett. I just, I have a, I have, I have a slight concern.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's about our bottom line, okay? So we know that the residents are paying their part. Take it, that's a given, okay? Everybody here has admitted that, okay? My concern is, what are we doing about our bottom line for those individuals? For those developments that still are in this city that owe bills and have not paid a single dime towards those bills? You know what I'm saying? And I'm talking about every business in here, from the Hell Building to the, uh, to the apartments on, on, on Second and Third, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, 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 to the, uh, to, to the businesses on what were, every single business in this city owes us money with regards to our water. And my concern is, is that we're leaning too much on the residents and not enough on the businesses who have debts here, okay? I mean, I, 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 you know, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to sound petty here, but even our council president owes this city sixty thousand dollars in water fees just for Liberty School. He owes that alone, okay? So what happens to the people who owe this money, who you have not collected from, but we're leaning on the residents to make sure that they pay? If they don't pay, their stuff is cut off. Wh- what about the people who owe money that haven't paid? Why haven't they been shut off? Why haven't their rates been raised? Why haven't they come before this council to explain why they haven't paid? It's so much, it's millions of dollars in this city, and I'm talking about our bottom line. This is our bottom line. I mean, you're on my ass about six hundred and fifty dollars for stormwater runoff of my property. I mean, I don't owe sixty grand. But I don't owe that level of money.
So one of the things that we gotta bring before council in the new term is the ordinance. Because the ordinance requires us to pay to sue you. So we're suing the Ford factory now. So the, the, the non-payers, so if forty percent is residential, then the rest of it is commercial. So we have land banks, land banks, because the property goes, once the property goes foreclosure, what I explained to Ms. Fry, we have an extremely high foreclosure rate. People losing their houses all the time, hundred fifty, two hundred houses a year. That's why we're shrink. Some people are losing their houses. Those houses go into the land banks. Because we can't afford to buy them. In order for us to keep them going into the land bank, we have to pay the county taxes. We can't pay the county taxes. So you have these huge land banks. You have, that's a thousand parks, Wayne County and the State Land Bank, which we are suing. But the, the problem is, the land banks, the Ford factories, they make a business decision. And so one of the things that we need to do is to put in the ordinance that if we sue you, you have to pay our legal fees. Because then the business decision won't be so agreeable.
Now, Ms. Square, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there's a slight problem with that ordinance. The way this council is set now, that ordinance will never get passed here. Hold on, hold on a second. I, 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 I am, I, I am simply saying, either the mayor is gonna veto it, and we don't have enough votes to overturn the veto, or council president and Ms. Manica and everybody else is gonna stand in the way or pass such an ordinance to get that money into the city.
And sir, you're gonna stop interrupting the lady when she's trying to, I know you don't have any respect for women, but you're gonna stop that.
Yes, ma'am.
Bottom line, the other non-payers, a lot of churches in this town.
Yes, ma'am.
And you can't lean them. We have a lot of nonprofits. You can't lean them. We have a lot of problems with that other, this is not a new problem. This is a historical problem. When the bills were cheap and when the city had its own water, they didn't have to go after them as much. But we've got to change the ordinance. We have ordinance because I'm concerned about being able to come up with the revenue requirement that we need to come up with in the short term, in the short term. And so bottom line, and those places don't qualify for any assistance. So that's, that's a big percentage of the town. So that's a problem. What I said earlier, we got problems, some roads, all of that. I'm not making that up, because the town is half-empty. So I agree with you. Uh, we, we have current lawsuits going on now. Jack, right over there, has the, uh, has the, uh, the Manchester factory. The Ford factor, factory is seventy-three acres. It sits in a big part of the town. Now, they say they only use one toilet, but they got a lot of, they got a lot of stormwater. And if you notice, the means group put in a detention base. They put in two detention bases. They came, they, so the Ford factory hasn't wanted, have, they have not wanted to make that type of investment because of their business model. So we've got a lot of, uh, uh, when these, when these developments come in, we gotta make sure that they develop the property in, in a way that they are not causing a whole bunch of expense that they're not gonna pay. So this is, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but you're absolutely right. Um, you know, up to this point, we really, we had a problem really since two thousand. So this is a twenty-three-year problem, uh, because, you know, in ninety-six, when Chrysler left, when Chrysler left, they had to pay the lease.
Yeah, I remember that.
They had to pay, and when they left, they cut a deal. And I've said it a thousand times, I'm going to say it. We had a fixed rate, but the city kind of didn't know it had fixed rates. So this is why I'm saying that we have to stay on top of this, because Detroit then just started billing them other than the fixed rate. So a lot of these businesses, you're right, they left. Some of them paid, some of them didn't pay. The schools all closed, schools never paid. I mean, we could point the finger at who didn't pay the rent. But going forward, we've gotta be able to go after them, and they gotta pay us to go after them. And so the, the ordinance, she's absolutely right. Maybe they're gonna have a contract for service. You know, the other problem is, nobody really wants to pay, or they wanna pay nothing, or they wanna pay. But this town was Birmingham back in the day. A big expensive place. So it's unrealistic for us to think that nobody's gonna have to pay. Even when we had our own water plant, the water plant, let's, let's, let's keep it real, it broke down because it hadn't been repaired. And it hadn't been repaired, because you would have had to raise the rate so high that people would have had to spend a lot of money to try to keep it up. But I think that, when you look at the next fifty years in Highland Park, if we can pull this off, then I see a bright future. I see a bright future if we can pull this off. But it's almost, and cities are, the cities, you plan in the city for water infrastructure, water practice. Bottom line is, you own it. You own it. Only it's why they have to take it away from it now, is because those points are, owns a small portion with us. Because if we just owned it outright out there, somebody would have got it already and taken it from us. So I think that, that you always have that opportunity, because the city owns the water rights. It isn't so much the plant, it's the right to the water in the lake. Because you own that land out there. You have to have, you have to own what, land on the water to have the rights. But I think that this is just the very beginning of, uh, a lot of hard work. I can see it. Um, you're, you'll be here. And, um, the city's gonna get rebuilt.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's call for the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Square. I appreciate it. You know what I'm saying? I just wanted to, to simply just point out the fact that I'm concerned about us leaning too heavily on the residents. And I know that the governor's watching, and I'm asking her to step in and possibly do something to remedy this situation, because these people need to pay.
Okay, Madam Proton, you had your hand up?
Yes, I'm asking the citizens of our great city. How do you want me to vote tonight? I'm asking.
No, ma'am. Don't. We're not doing this. When, Ms. 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 Delarsky, please. Good Lord, please, please don't disrespect. We, we, this is our last item.
How do you want me to vote tonight?
Okay, so right now, uh, state of Michigan, our mediator, the legislature, both the senate and the congress who put this together, the governor, the news, they're all waiting to hear this vote. So, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll on item eleven?
Councilman Ashafi.
I'm an air on the side of caution and vote no.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Uh, yes, I'm voting in the affirmative. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
You're welcome. Okay, so, right now, I'm gonna set this clock for two minutes. If there are any citizen that would like to speak, I'm gonna hold you to that two minutes. This is our last meeting of the year. I'm gonna hold you hard to that two minutes.
Your computer, your computer.
He almost didn't want it. He was like, I know the feeling, brother. I got two of them. I'll be, I'll be wanting them. So, Ms. Ford, if you would be so kind, yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Okay, my name is Renee Ford. I have, um, want to wish everybody a happy holiday. So just don't, you know, happy holiday. So my question and concern, and I know she, council, she, I have four, and I'm gonna say them real quick. We have been coming here eleven and a half months. What have you accomplished for your district three? I live in District Three, and you always talking about what the mayor and the council president has and has not done. Question two, what resources have you provided for your district? Examples. I noticed that council person, Manica and, and Martin gave out several recessed resources over the last eleven and a half months. That has helped their district, and I appreciate that, because I wanna move on that side of town. Question three, also, each council person was given five thousand dollars. What did you do with yours, and do you still have it? Because I know it, it acquired, you can't use it or carry it on.
Just a district.
I said, oh, all of these are for District Three, for District Three. Every meeting you state that the mayor and council person are violating law, do you have any documentation to support your claim? If so, can you share that with us? I know lawsuits, you can't, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, ma'am.
So, another thing, now this is for three council, Keshi and President Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys were very disrespectful tonight, because she, really, you guys argue like a two-year-old or my three-year-old niece argues with me back and forth. That was not appreciated. I did not like that, and I know company in the house, and you guys clown, acted a pure fool. Ms. Martin, I, I mean, Ms. Robinson, I appreciate you asking me for my advice. I will never tell anyone how to vote, and yes, I will always question the no vote and the yes vote. So I appreciate you acknowledging me, and I'm hoping that you are out. Whoever was ill is doing better, and I give you those. So happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Ms. Ford. All right. Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
My name is Tammy Stafford, resident of Highland Park, and this question is for Mr. Garrett. My name is Tammy Stafford, resident of Highland Park, and this question is for Mr. Garrett.
She's.
This question is for you, Mr. Garrett. I wanted to know, how often does the, um, water department give audits? Is it yearly? Every year? Mm-hmm. So from two thousand fourteen up into two thousand twenty-three, um, from the audits that have been done, is there, uh, million dollars that's unaccountable for in the water department? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to come up here again and, um, uh, use another two minutes, um, to apologize if I sounded condescending and explain why my voice was terse trying to get everything that I had to say into two minutes. Um, I did call you, Mr. Garrett, um, on Thursday, and I, I asked, um, you know, if we could get on the same page about the budget. Nobody informed me in spite of the fact that we did have conversations. Nobody told me that the budget was going to be posted anywhere. And I don't know why it wouldn't be posted online, the wat, the water budget, or why council wouldn't have the new water budget in their packet. So, um, but I, I wanna explain to you guys why I care so much about the accounting. You see, I actually did, um, the, the research, for instance, for this, these truck parts of about a month ago. And I found that, um, some of those parts were marked up as much as six hundred percent, um, in, in the, the cheapest proposal we got. I looked at, you know, a lot of, of different industry publications and message boards, and it said that one hundred percent markup is the highest that, you know, respectable establishment would do for a part. And that people who are trying to screw you are gonna be char, doing a markup of as much as three hundred percent. So when we get a markup on a part of six hundred percent, I gotta say, somebody is screwing around here. Somebody is not doing Highland Park justice. You know, um, and that is why I keep coming back to that. Now, um, the, the water department budget that I, um, I haven't seen the new one, um, but it wasn't just a math mistake. There was all, um, and, and by the way, there was more than a million dollars worth of mistakes in that first budget. About half, a little more than half, was a simple math mistake. Um, and the other one was a mistake of form. You see, what I mentioned conflation before is that all these different categories were on one page, one budget, and so what we had was depreciation in what looked like a cash-in, cash-out kind of budget, offsetting revenues. Depreciate, you have to have, uh, I mean, that's great.
Mr. Stalarski, you over your two minutes.
Does anybody wanna hear the rest?
No, ma'am. We have, you over your two minutes.
Uh, no?
You over your two minutes. Thank you very much, ma'am. We have anyone else? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, sir. Listen, nobody cares that you were engineering, you spent half your life learning your job. Okay, I got you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm ten years on college campuses with you two, so I don't have no comment. Yes, sir. Go for it. Go for it.
That, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Mark Ashley Price. I'm the treasurer of the Highland Park Schoolboy. Um, but this being the last state council meeting, I just wanna say happy holidays to the school district, and also wanna send peace and love to everybody that's in Highland Park and happy holidays. And one of the highest honors of my life and one of the things that I'm really thankful for is of course serving UHP. Um, you, I, I was on the city charter commission with Mama Nadi and Ms. Wheeler, and currently I'm on the schoolboy again with Ms. Wheeler and Roy McGee and Vice President White. Uh, I just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you, and I love you all HP and many blessings to, to everybody in Highland Park. I love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Reginald Bradley, and I pass the gospel true like church of God in Christ. And I like to say, well, I tell them at the church where I pass it, to play the game, you gotta know the rules. I'd just like to say, grew up in Highland Park, went to Corlins, went to fairs, in the old Highland Park High School. I still pay the taxes on my mother's house on sturdernut, and also got property on Piers in Highland Park. What I wanna say is, what I'm watching is, next year you got the NFL draft coming here. With all respect to Highland Park, you get outside of Highland Park, Novi, they building all kind of condos. Look at what Northland was. Congo, uh, condos are right behind now. They got the Costco. The developers has come in to build, why don't you talk to them about building condos? Because there's an old saying, if you build it, they will come. Follow what I'm saying? I'm gonna tell you what I did at my church. You know what I did, Ms. Martin? You can drive by there tomorrow. They did, in the city of Detroit, they charged for water coming in, water going out, and drainage. Ms. Manica, you know what I do? I don't do? I don't pave my parking lot. I got a five hundred gallon tank on the side of my fellowship hall. We first moved it, our water bill was a thousand dollars a month. Now it's only three hundred and thirty. My mother always said, learn how to get that man hand out your pocket. Can I get, I know in church, don't wear an eagle's office. But the Bible said, a fool and his money soon depart. He that get to the rich gonna surely come to want. They'll tell you, main thing we do before we leave that church, make sure no water's running, no lights is left on, and the gas to the stove is turned off. Because I'll try to watch out for the flock. Because if you don't watch out for the flock, you ain't getting no water. So I'm saying this instead of, love you guys. But tonight is the last night I'm gonna hear y'all bickering. Our house that's divided won't stand. I'm gonna tell you what I tell, I love him. I'm gonna tell you what I tell the people at church. I just be talking. Don't come to me when we got company say, Pastor, I had to kill a roach. Wait till the company leave, and then tell me that. You got guests here, be on your best behavior. Respect one another. Make sense to everybody? I love all you all. In case y'all wanna know what I want for Christmas, it's a Jaguar.
Thanks very much.
Hey, it's Danny again. I just wanted to add, uh, when I was making this comments about the drainage fee, I forgot to mention that I was talking about impervious surfaces or lack of impervious surfaces. There's a, um, lot that's all grass, then it would make sense for the drainage fee to not be the same as an all-concrete lot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pagan.
Hi, one quick word. Linda Wheeler, I wanna thank, uh, all my council people for serving the city. I'm not even gonna talk about getting along. You all know what to do, okay? Um, you know, uh, I wanna thank also our Pro Tem for asking the citizens, how do you want me to vote? That was classy. That was classy. Thank you. You know, beautiful Kwanzaa, uh, Merry Christmas, whatever you do, okay? Be safe.
Great meeting. I enjoy everything. I wanna say happy Kwanzaa every day at six o'clock. The twenty-sixth through the first, we will be right lighting the candle at Ninety's Knowledge Cafe, Seventy-one Oakman. And, uh, I like for y'all to come out, uh, for Kwanzaa. And, uh, on the businesses, uh, side, I notice no one asks the business, the people who are coming to build the business, do we have any incentives for them? How would they contribute to Highland Park? I just hear like money. That, that's nothing compared to, will they just jump up and leave, you know? What, yeah. They leave us with the, I even hear all this stuff that happened before. What are their incentives to Highland Park? So that's, you know, something to look at. Anyway, y'all have a good Kwanzaa and a good New Year.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see that podium is empty, so we should be able to move into.
Um, once again, I'm back. Now, the other, uh, thing I wanted to mention was that in terms of the infrastructure, um, that a hundred million or fifty million, whatever number that they come up with, those jobs should be going to people at Highland Park first. First, before anybody else. They have jobs that pay twenty to thirty dollars an hour, just holding up a sign, don't go down this street. And anybody could do that, right? Any of y'all could just stand up there and get twenty, thirty dollars an hour. Now, the other thing is that the reason why I, uh, have so much passion and care for Highland Park is because my aunt was the water ward. She is the one who saved your, you guys' houses in twenty fifteen when the water board was trying to take them. You know, she, Mama Lila Cavill. And, uh, I got some, uh, awards from her. By.
Thirty seconds.
The governor. And, uh, also Stephanie Chang, along with other people. And the whole point was to save Highland Park's water, to make sure that Highland Park kept their water infrastructure. And that's the, that's the big thing. You guys should have your own water and control your own destiny. Nothing can be gotten without water. You're here to be.
Yep, thank you very much. That's your two minutes. Fantastic. So we're gonna move into council affairs right now, starting with the councilman from the third district. And I intend to time this, because I'm gonna match that time exactly. However long he talks will be as long as I talk.
Ladies and gentlemen, pray for us, ladies and gentlemen, okay? I simply just wanna say that I voted no tonight. And, and I know a lot of you were looking for me to vote yes, but I voted no for a reason. I'm worried and concerned that the ratio for which they are collecting water from the residents of Highland Park is unfair, is uneven, is one-sided. Your feet are being hailed over the coal, and the businesses and the nonprofits in this city get a pass. And I have a problem with that. Okay, there's no reason that you have to pay your entire bill and everybody else that operates in this city, from every business and nonprofit, halfway house, uh, 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 apartment complex, or whatever the case may be, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars, and their water's still running. Let you have fifty dollars owed on your bill, and you get shut off by Monday. I find that unacceptable. I think the same lenience at which they give the businesses and the nonprofits and the homes and the apartment complexes, the, the same lead what they, in which they give them, they need to be sharing that leeway with the residents of Highland Park. They should give you time, should give you some effort, should give you a little leeway to pay your bills. Now, Highland Park residents always pay their bills, and that's always been the case. Even when the bills weren't going out, residents would still make your payments on their bills. And you remember when the bills weren't going out? Residents would still make your payments because they knew if they didn't make the payments, it would be truly astronomical when it came to them. So they continued to make bills, payments on their bills. I don't see the fairness here. I don't see the justice. I don't see the right. I just see the wrong. So yes, I voted no. And as long as I'm sitting here, when I see wrong within justice being done to the residents of Highland Park, I'm gonna vote exactly that same no. You didn't put me here to lie in my pockets. You didn't put me here to spew my own opinion. You put me here to safeguard the well-being and the welfare of you. I belong to you. I am your councilman. Now, quickly speaking to Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Ford, I've been very busy. I just don't advertise. I'm not a person that advertises. So there were quite a few people up here today who got awards for things in which they did in Highland Park. Half of those people that came up here got money from my district to do those things in which they did in that district for MLK Park and for the Paco Monterey. I gave money for that. Okay, I have not touched a single dime of my district money unless a resident has asked me for something specifically benefiting the whole of the district. So when they were doing the work in MLK and they needed dumpsters, I paid for those dumpsters. I just don't advertise. I don't see the need to advertise. I mean, what's the purpose of doing the right thing if I need you to know I've done the right thing? How do I square that with God? How do I square letting the left hand know what the right hand was doing? I'm sorry, that's not act of charity to me. So I don't advertise it. I do a lot of charity work in, 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 in the city and for my district. If you ask anybody, they'll let you know. So all I am simply saying is here, I'm here to serve the residents of Highland Park. I don't care about the fame and the glory and the fortune, or whatever it is that whoever sat in this seat before me was looking for. I couldn't care less about it. It means nothing to me. It's a waste of time, space, and energy. What I'm concerned about is my survival, and my survival depends on your survival. If you crash and burn, I crash and burn, right? So that's the only thing I'm concerned about. I know what it is to have self-preservation. I need the residents of Highland Park to understand it and get on it very quickly. Because there's a lot being done here behind the scenes in which you don't have the slightest idea about. A lot of games are being played. And the object of that game is to get you and your black behind somebody here as fast as they possibly can. Now, I don't mind outsiders coming in, but don't tell me, after I've been sitting here for twenty years, that I have to get out. Highland Parkers need to survive. Growth is painful. It's gonna happen. It's coming. But it doesn't mean that this city can't grow with us in it. It doesn't mean that we have to get out. So I will continue to fight for you, HP. I will be sitting right here, recall or not, best of luck to you, because you definitely ain't got nothing to recall me on. I wish you the best on it. Now, being this is the holiday time of year, I know people love to say, oh, season's greetings, happy holidays. Yeah, I hate that. This is a Christian month. It is the most holiest day in all of Christendom. So I say to you and everybody in the great city of Highland Park, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Just like you respect me during the month of Ramadan, I will respect you during the holiest month of Christendom. Season greetings is disrespectful. Happy holidays is disrespectful. Merry Christmas, HP, and Happy New Year.
Council President.
All right, Ms. Martin.
Council President, I had my hand up during citizens' participation online.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
No one, there's other people on here too who had their hands up, and nobody acknowledged us.
We were focused, we, we were live, we were live in the meeting. We were just focused on what was going on in here. That was no disrespect to those citizens. But we did start citizen particip, I mean, uh, council affairs. So we're gonna go ahead and, unless there's something that you wanted to address to move through it?
Yes, please.
Ms., uh, Ms. Martin, would you mind yielding?
I didn't have much to say anyway. I wanted to just say thank you for being out here tonight. I appreciate you guys for staying here that long and putting up with going on during the meeting. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, if you would?
Yes, I wanna address some things as a citizen. As a citizen of Highland Park, there were some statements made today that, uh,
The children have left the building.
I must.
I must, a council president, council president, council president. I had the two, excuse me, excuse me, everyone. Excuse me, I have my two minutes. I have, I have my two minutes. Excuse me.
Okay, okay, fine, fine. Madam?
Do I have, can I have my two minutes?
Ma'am, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay, so there was a statement made, a statement made by Councilman Ashafi that addressed the concerns about the snowplow, and he said that I was very disrespectful to the two people who voted no. I wanna read my statement real quick, because there was no disrespect there. And if they took it that way, that's on them, but that's not. The statement was that the safety of our residents are always at the forefront of the city administration, and we would hope that the city council reconsider our requests and approve the resolution to serve our trucks. We wanna make sure that the streets are safe and for our residents. Now, if that's disrespectful, then so be it. But there was no disrespect in this comment. I have it as what. The other thing is, there's been comments made in these council meetings by our councilmen, who, which has already, we've already received one lawsuit. And now there's other ones where statements are being made that these, the, all of the businesses, and we can pull it back, all of the business in Highland Park is not paying their bills. That is an incorrect statement, and we need to be very careful and very mindful of how we make statements in this council chamber and on these recordings. We've received one lawsuit already, just based on his comments. That will, the citizens might have to take care of that. I am hoping for the new year, and I'm saying this to whoever's there, I see he walked out, but to Councilwoman Martin, I am looking forward to working and moving things forward in this city. To Councilwoman Manica, I would like to continue to work to move things forward in this city. To Council Pro Tem Robinson, I would like to continue to move things forward in this city. As you have heard in this council chamber, we are in desperate need of developments. And these developments have to go forward in order for us to be able to not charge water, extra water money, or whatever, to anyone. To Councilman Jamal, I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, that was disrespectful, to Councilman, President Thomas. We have to make sure that in the fall, in the new year, we are not addressing comments that are made that is disrespectful to anyone in that chamber, and the disrespect that was shown to our inspector today and told, said that he was not voting because he said no to them, that you wouldn't get anything. That is what was, he might've came off in the wrong way or whatever, but you do not vote based on what somebody personally said to you. Those are, those are personal things. You're working for the citizens, and if you're not gonna continue to work for the citizens, then we have a problem, and I have to go forward with trying to make sure that these things are investigated, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Councilwoman Manica, under council affairs.
I don't even know where to start. Listen, thank you all for a great year. I don't know how everybody else feel, but I think that I had a very good year as a councilperson. I do wanna go back, unfortunately, to that. I do not discuss a problem I have with a person in the public. If I have a problem with you or it's something I wanna discuss, I ask you and I talk to you. So I expect that same respect back. Ms. Martin, I was not questioning your vote. I did not understand, because I felt, and I seen that you didn't hear. But here's the thing, if indeed you felt disrespected, okay, thank you.
If I did, I would've come to call you, to talk to you. That is why.
No problem, no problem. No problem. So with that...
I love when you question me. I don't have a problem at all.
I do. No, I'm just kidding. So anyway, again, listen, I hear everybody say about the Vietnam City. I'm gonna say this again. I was literally born, right, okay, and I'm still here. I have five city generations here. So some of you, when you get up, I truly understand, I get it. And some of you come up and you talk about Highland Park. There's one person I know that did not, wasn't born here, wasn't here at first, doesn't live here, but know a lot of information, and that's Ms. Squig. And, and she did her research, you know, truly, it isn't 'cause she lived here. And I'm not saying that because she said it, I said that because I've had a conversation with her. And that's what I try to do, and that's what I tend to do going forward with each and every person. You know, I will have that conversation with you, and I will try to give you what you asked for. I love the fire department and the police department. I, I had a whole lot. I wanted to talk about Good Neighbor, but going into January, I will definitely discuss Good Neighbor and some other things. But I do wanna most, most definitely say thank you to some departments, and that is definitely the police and the fire. Before I became city council, and even after, I've seen them use empathy, I've seen them use discretion, I've seen them deal with mental, mental illness, etc. And I've seen them actually police each other. I don't know if you understand what I mean, but they kinda monitor each other and guide. So I have seen that. And I wanna say thanks to the engineering department, most of you don't know, or some of you do. The list that the citizens gave me, I gave it to them, I also meet with them. But they actually called me, and we went and walked my district, okay? And seen the problem. So I wanna hands down say thank you to them as well. I also say thank you to all administration. I come up here, I'm harassed, I'm gonna be honest. I bother a couple people. But for the most part, if you come with respect, you're going to get respect. I know there's a lot of time come to the podium or people speak, and they come with this great attitude. You don't even understand how I'm sitting here, keeping my composure sometime, and it may not be with residents. It may be with my council members. But you have to learn how to sit, and you have to learn how to listen. And so as residents, I wanted to run out there on citizens' participation and say, can I play citizen right now? Right. But I did not. So again, I wanna say thank you, and thank you for all the things that you bring us, and understand that there is some un-understandings. There's some things that you don't know and you won't. Okay? But at the end of the day, we have got to do better, not as just council people, but as residents. We have got to do better as residents. We keep talking about the old, well, you need to remember some of the old, and understand that we are going into the new. Everybody have a great holiday, be safe, have safe travels, and that's the end.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Pro Tem?
Hello, everybody. How are you? Hey, I love you. I wanna thank my pastor for being here and my church family. And I also wanted to thank everybody for the prayers for my granddaughter. She is in Cincinnati, and she'll be there until April. She had a practice transplant. And I thank all you guys for your prayers, and please continue to keep her in the prayer. I love you, and I'm here.
Thank you very much. So... I don't know how to not be human. I'm the son of a pastor, Reverend Otis H. Thomas. And my grandfather would say, you can judge a person by the company that they keep. You can judge a person by the company they keep and what they'll allow. And so all of you have men in your family, your uncles, your grandfather, those men who were firm, stalwart, the pillars of your family, and they had certain standards that they abided by. And if you did something to harm them and their neighbors, those quiet men in those fishing hats, listening to baseball in their garages would come out and lay into you, because they cared about their family and they cared about their communities. So I don't understand how anybody watching this meeting can expect me to be anything other than a man. I am a man. I'm a father, I'm a husband. Both of my parents are still alive, they watch some of these meetings. I don't like Mr. Al Shafi. It should be apparent. I don't like him. I don't like anybody who will go out of their way to make it hard for people to enjoy their community. I don't like anybody who punches and chokes women. I don't like anybody who would knock over a, 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 a sign or something for a parade. I don't like anybody who would do those things. And if you guys think that I'm supposed to sit here and be antagonized week after week by somebody who would do that, and then come into this chambers and act as if they were a moral authority, I don't know what type of person you expect me to be. I'm a human. So if you could sit there and you can watch the activity that takes place here, and you think that I'm okay with being antagonized with somebody who is just trying to disrupt the process, I don't know what to do. I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry that the, that the citizens of the community think that I should endure that antagonism in public and in private. I don't know what to expect. I never expected to be on city council. I filled out my affidavit two hours before the window closed. So there was some divine intervention that put me here. I didn't aspire to do this job. I just wanted to be in the community and be a citizen. This is not something that I went after and sought after. I filled out a form, there was a lawsuit, and it wiped the other candidates off the ballot. So I didn't ask to be here. This was sort of divine intervention. So if the people in this community expect me to sit and endure the chaos and the antagonism and to not have any feelings, to not be a person, to not be a human, I'm sorry that I disappoint you. Because I see behind the scenes, I read the emails, and I endure the antagonism. When y'all go home, I have to go lie in my bed at night and go, dang, I was a part of a team where something good could happen for this community, and there was nothing that I could do. I did not have the capabilities to get that work done. I couldn't get it done. I have to sit, and I know as a person, as the five of us, I'm partly responsible, whether I voted yes or no. I have to sit and realize that the people down the street, the people around the corner, all those poor people in that hood housing, they're not gonna get access to the things that they need. And they get to go to sleep knowing that they couldn't do anything about it, they didn't have any input. I have to live with the fact that I was a part of city council, and for almost 12 months, nothing happened here. Whether I like it or not, I am responsible. And so I live with that responsibility. So if there are citizens in the community that expect me to forget what I see, if they expect me not to be a person, not to be a man, I'm not one of those people that's gonna see somebody in trouble and take out my phone and start taking a picture. I'm one of those rare human beings who will jump out of the car and come help you. I'm not gonna take a picture while you're drowning. I'm not gonna pass around something on social media. I'm actually gonna get involved. And if that bothers you, if having a firm position and pushing back against what I see is wrong, if that really bothers you, then folks, I'll be happy to go back to private citizenship. I would just hope that whoever sat in this chair, whoever was the city council president, had enough integrity and who knew how to do the right thing, who didn't worry about being liked, because what did your parents tell you when you were children? The other kids don't have to like you, baby. You just gotta do right. You gotta be able to look at yourself in the mirror. So if grown people come in here, and they want me to go along to get along, and they don't want me to have a conscience, and they don't want my moral compass to be operating, I don't know what to do for you. I don't know how to make you happy, because I have to go home and look at my family in the face. They know what integrity is, my parents, because they taught me. How can I come in this room and not have integrity? How can I not stand on the things that I believe? How can I allow things that are wrong to occur over and over again and not take a position? You know, injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. How hypocritical are we in the city of Highland Park that we go along to get along? 25 or 30 years of this crabs-in-the-barrel mentality, and no one stands up. And all the people who do stand up, they get stoned, they get castigated for standing up on what is right to defend somebody who is deliberately trying to derail the city, who's completely okay with it. I'm not okay with it. I wouldn't be okay with somebody burning down your house or burning down mine. I wouldn't be okay with that. And I'm willing to endure all the criticism of what it looks like to be a regular, working-class, blue-collar Joe to invest in Liberty School to make an improvement in my community. People could say whatever they wanna say, but there's a very short list of citizens in this community who have lined up and who have taken their retirement at 53, out of the bank, and said, I'm gonna invest it in this community. I'd be willing to have a conversation with those people, because win, lose, or draw, I made a decision that I care enough about this community to spend my own money, however little that I have. I bet it all on this community. So don't tell me how much you love this community when you haven't put no skin in the game. Don't try to admonish me for the things that I say. Tell me what I'm saying that's not the truth, and I'll stop saying it. But if I'm speaking the truth, I don't care what you think of me. I wasn't raised like that. I was raised with a moral compass. 12 months, 12 months. Got totally ambushed on my first day. And you guys allow that to happen every single week, all the people watching at home, and nobody does anything. I thought, I was coming here for city council meeting, but guess what? Week after week, this is what we get. Meeting adjourned, 10:27.